Good evening, everyone. If everybody could please take your seats so we can begin the meeting. Well, thank you all for attending a regular meeting of the City Council and the City Council serving as the Redevelopment, Aging, and Housing Authority Redevelopment Agency Board. Your call.
Councilmember Mattis.
Present.
Councilmember McKee. Councilmember Pai.
Present.
Mayor Proten Betts.
Present.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, motion to excuse Councilmember McKee, who is out of the country.
Second.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. I believe Mr. McKee is on a vacation. I mean, he's not ill, correct?
No, he's in Greece.
He's in Greece. Oh, wow, what a place to be. Okay, so since he's in Greece, you need to take his place and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Perfect.
Please place your hand over your heart and join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready to get. I give allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's good to see we have a Chicago Cub fan with us tonight. Go Cubs, I guess. Two Cub fans, I apologize there. It's probably more than that.
Three.
Oh, three, okay. Well, it's good to know you're being represented well. Let's move on with an approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Have a comment. I've just been informed by the city manager that in regards to item number two, the gentleman, the applicant, is not present because he's out of the country. That has to do, that's the annexation of number six to the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District, number 2010-1. That's the YK Spa. And item number 12, it appears we may not have a quorum to deal with that issue since Councilmember McKee is not present today. So my recommendation is that we continue that to the next meeting.
Move the agenda with the items two and 12 pulled to continue till the city attorney says.
Okay, we got a motion. Got a second. Everybody, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the city attorney report on closed session held October 6, 2015.
In regards to the Conference of Legal Counsel regarding potential exposure to litigation that was discussed in October 6 meeting, there was no reportable action taken by the city council.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any urgency items before the council this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to presentations. Our first one will be, I'll let the city manager do the introduction. Hold on, just a second. Mayor Proten Betts.
You're supposed to remind me. We have a letter that we need to get out to the people who are inviting somebody to China, and we didn't get that on the agenda. You and I had talked about putting that on the agenda, but we didn't get that done. Do we want to put that on now and deal with that?
Yes, sir.
That was the invitation for somebody from this council to go to China. We don't know who it is yet. There's something coming up, I think, on November 3rd that might determine who's going, so.
Let's see, the city manager, Magana, can clarify, because I think we're okay sending a letter telling them we're gonna be going, we just can't tell them who exactly is going just yet.
That is correct. I did send an email to Mr. Yu earlier today stating that, based on the discussion that the city attorney and I had with him, was that we had agreed that we were gonna wait until after the election to find out what the council was going to be. Their big push was wanting us to get out there by November 10th, and that just really cuts it close because depending on the outcome of the election, the first council, I mean, the council won't be seated until the first meeting in December, that's December 1st. In December, in China, the weather apparently, from what I'm understanding, is extremely cold, and that's why they were trying to have it done in November.
Yeah, and I would suggest, too, that if you don't have a passport and you want to go, you think you're gonna be able to go, you should get your passport applications in right away and your shots.
The urgency item was going to be that Mr. Betts and I were going to put on the agenda to discuss a formal letter from the mayor saying that someone would be attending after November 3rd. They would make that decision on who would be attending, so it sounds like it's being done already, so I don't think we need to discuss those accounts.
Okay, good.
Moving on, presentations. Flood preparedness presentation, city manager Magana. Who's gonna present? Okay, Daniel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council. Do a quick presentation on flood preparedness. Let me just get this thing going. There you go. I'm gonna be discussing preparing for the rainy season, possible floods, give a real brief rainy season and history, what is El Niño, how the city has prepared, how you can prepare, identify some flooding hazards, identify possible road closures and routes, and provide some emergency contacts. Desert Hot Springs rainy season lasts between November and March. We have an average rainfall of 3.9 inches annually. Riverside County Flood Control provided the annual rainfall for the past 20 years. You'll see that we've had some dry years where we had less than an inch of rain, and we had some very wet years where we had almost 15 inches of rain. Some of those wetter years, we had in 1998 when we had a little bit over eight inches of rain. In 2005, we had about 15 inches of rain. 2010, we had eight, and in 2011, we had a little bit over eight. The last heavy rain season we had was in 2010, 2011. Some of you might remember, we had a lot of road damage, a lot of flooding occurred throughout the entire city. So for this winter season, 2015, 2016, oh. Based on empirical data, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, is forecasting high probability of El Niño to happen during this winter season. Now, what is El Niño? Oh, this thing keeps moving, huh? El Niño is a weather phenomenon that involves warming the Pacific Ocean. Increased temperatures cause dramatic change in weather patterns around the world, which bring wetter rainy season to California. How does this affect Desert Hot Springs? It may or may not have more rain events than we have seen in the past couple of years. It's not gonna be one huge storm, it's gonna be more multiple small storms or constant storms. It is still uncertain how much more rain we will see, it's just a forecast. Now, the city has prepared. How have we prepared? City staff has participated in various emergency trainings, received various certifications, and we've completed emergency scenario events. We have partnered with surrounding cities and Riverside County for flood prevention tasks and emergency needs. Our staff has been trained, educated, and procedures to be completed during any flood event. Our vehicles and equipments have been serviced and ready to use. Heavy machinery contractors have been retained on as-needed basis to support our field crews. We currently are doing a catch basin cleanup project where citywide catch basins are getting cleaned up. We're also cleaning up our retention basins throughout the entire city. We're doing some road shoulder work, and we're clearing all drainage and waterways throughout the entire city. How can you prepare before the storm? First of all, you can check if you're in a female flood zone. You can call the city engineering department, 329-6411, extension 218 or extension 216 will gladly tell you what zone you're in. We recommend that you review your flood insurance documents to make sure you are covered. You clean all your roof gutters, cut down any weakened trees that could damage your home during an event, a rain event. Take care of all your grading and draining needs on your property now. Check any loose roof tiles, any roof shingles, and fix all roof leaks now. You can also set some sandbags as barriers to protect flood hazard areas around your home or your business during a rain event. During a rain event, emergencies always call 911. For flooded streets, malfunctioning traffic signals, or clogged storm drains, you can call me at extension 2329-6411, extension 216. Any power outages, report into Southern California Edison. Sandbags and sand will be available for free to all residents to be picked up at Fire Station 37, which is the one right here on Pearson West. We are a small staff, we can't be throughout the entire city, so we do ask that if you need sandbags, please stop by Fire Station 37, pick up all the sand, sandbags you need. Now, we are prone to flooding. You are gonna see, and depending on the rain event, you might see some road closure due to flooding. If you see these signs say "road closed," turn around and don't drown. In other words, do not walk or drive through the flooded areas or the flooded waters, not attempt to go around the barricades. You not only put yourself in danger, but you put the safety crew in danger as well. So we ask you to please, if you see a sign, just turn around and do not try to cross. Provided here some street flooding hazards based on the past. We are an El Lujio fan to the mountains to the north. We have two main washes, the Mission Creek Wash and the Big Morongo Wash. They both go from north to south. Everywhere where they cross a street that doesn't have a bridge creates a flooding hazard or a road closure hazard. You can see here Mission Lakes Boulevard, Two Bunch Palms, Dillon, Little Morongo. All these streets have a hazard of either flooding or even road closures. If those are your daily routes, we suggest you take Pearson or Palm, those are the routes that during all flooding scenes have remained open. I do want to let you guys know that we are committed to opening all the roads that do become closed or all the channels that do become clogged. We are a committed team, we're gonna be here 24 hours a day if we need to, to make sure that all passageways are actually safe to travel and to cross by everybody. Some emergency contacts, for police, fire, and ambulance, call 911. For power outages, call Southern California Edison. For water leaks or sewer leaks, call Mission Springs Water District. For flooded roads, traffic signals, or storm drain, you can call me at 760-329-6411, extension 216, or you can also email me anytime. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions?
Just one.
Mayor Proten Betts.
Is it up there at the top of Santa Cruz, or I forget the exact name of the streets? We've got some culverts. There's storm drains that are designed to keep the water on the hill, deflected away from the homes, and they need to be cleaned out, have needed for years. What are we doing to inspect every situation like that and getting the work done before these rains hit, if they do?
We have, I believe, 113 catch basins that we are currently cleaning out throughout the entire city. That might be one of the ones in the list. If they're in Riverside County jurisdiction, then Riverside County is the one that maintains those, but before the meeting, I can get exactly the location and make sure that those get cleaned up.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna come down to do a few awards for the health and wellness. Let's see, there we go. A few meetings back, we had a couple of young people here that were involved with voter registration, and I know one young man's here. I'm gonna have him come up, because I know his dad's with him, but I, so, I know Mia Duarte Gonzalez isn't here, but Noah Gout is. Come around to the corner here. I'll even let you say a few words. But basically, Noah was really instrumental on talking to his classmates, and more importantly, having his classmates talk to their parents, asking them if they had been registered to vote. And through that process, a lot of parents then had to answer the question, right? Yes or no? And the ones that were saying no, they're saying, "Why not?", right? So, because of your efforts, and I know also Mia, who's not here, we want to give you an award for really having determination to ask adults the importance of registering to vote, but to also get them more involved in the community. So I'm gonna present you, Noah Gout, with a service and supportive community, and we got your name spelled correctly, correct? All right. So I'm gonna have you take a picture with Donna, then I'm gonna have you say a few words, okay? Say yes.
Yes.
Now, go ahead. Noah, we'll take the picture, then he'll say a few words. Okay, look at Donna. Okay, I'm gonna push this down even further, look at that. There you go. So just answer the question, I guess, why did you do it, and what did you learn in the process? Basically, say anything you like, go ahead. Do you wanna say a few words? How about if you just say, "Thank you, Dad."
Thank you, Daddy.
Well, he was really talking it up earlier, so.
I don't know. That's what the cameras do to you, they just make you nervous.
Okay, our second health and wellness award, actually, I'm gonna have Mr. Richard Finn come up, who's actually our city's coordinator in Memorial Day, but he wasn't here for the International Day of Peace proclamation, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it, and then I have a banner for Mr. Finn, and then he's gonna talk about Veterans Day, who's coming up, and what it's gonna involve. But this proclamation is on behalf of the council and the mayor. At our last council meeting, which reads, "Whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all peoples and remains humanity's guiding inspiration, and whereas in 1981, the United Nations proclaimed the International Day of Peace be devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace both within and among all nations and peoples. Whereas the United Nations expanded the observance of the International Day of Peace in 2001 to include the call for a day of global ceasefire and nonviolence, invited all nations and people of honor, a cessation of hostilities for the duration of the day. Whereas there is a growing support within our city for the observance of the International Day of Peace, which affirms a vision of our world at peace and fosters cooperation between individuals, organizations, and nations. Whereas the global crisis impels all citizens to work towards converting humanity's noblest aspirations for world peace into the practical reality of a culture of peace for future generations. Now therefore, I, Adam Sanchez, Mayor of the City of Desert Hot Springs, hereby proclaim on September 21st as an International Day of Peace throughout the city of Desert Hot Springs, and urge all government departments, agencies, organizations, guilds, schools, places of worship, and individuals in our city to commemorate in appropriate manner the International Day of Peace. This may include community service projects, cultural exhibits, performances, a moment of silence, ringing a bell, sharing the universal message, "May peace prevail on earth, at noon, vigils, religious services, and in all places of worship, and other education and public awareness activities, in order to help establish a global day of peace in our homes, in our communities, and between all nations." So Mr. Richard Finn is the one that actually presented all this, and it's a great thing, and I'm gonna have him speak to this, and then after that, I'm gonna have a special presentation for him. Mr. Richard Finn.
I'd like to thank the city for honoring this proclamation, and I also like to thank Casey, a member of Veterans for Peace, for helping me write this. It's her words, but it's very important. As soldiers, we take an oath to the Constitution to protect the American people, and I take that oath very seriously, but I also believe in peace, because we are peacekeepers, and we respond to defend the rights of Americans. So my goal is to bring one day of peace throughout the world, barbecues across the world. Peace starts with one day, and that's what I plan on doing. Also, I plan on 22 veterans take their lives daily, because stuff isn't going on, that the VA is not doing their job, let's just be blunt about it. So I am the chairman of the Veterans Committee, and I, there's a lot of efforts that we could do in this city to help our veterans. There's a 20% veterans population, so those are the efforts that I'm trying to do. So on that note, November 11th is Veterans Day, and that's when we honor our heroes, veterans, well, we don't call ourselves heroes, we call ourselves soldiers, Marines, sailors, airmen, corpsmen, you know? We, we're service. We believe in serving the country. So this November 11th, at 10:00 a.m., we're gonna be having our Veterans Day memorial service ceremony. The broskitos are gonna play, we're gonna have food, we're gonna have guest speaker, we're gonna, just, it's a beautiful ceremony, we've been doing it for the, I've been helping with it for the past two years, and it's an honor, and anybody that wants to help, you know, again, my name, number's 908-463-9006. Anybody has any veterans out there that need help? Also, we have a 100-year-old veteran that's gonna bring the wreath up, so that's really exciting, too. So that's all I really have to say, but thank you. Thank you for this.
As many of you can see, for the last year and a half, with the help of staff, we've been putting veterans on our walls, and Mr. Finn has always been a hard one to get a picture of in order to get this done. So finally, I told him, "Just give me your picture of the day that you first began serving", and he said, "Boy, I look really young." And I go, "Yes, you do." So come over here, Mr. Finn. Hold that up. Here, I'll hold this in.
This is a specialist, it wasn't when I first got here.
Come up here.
Come up here.
Sorry.
Where's this gonna be held? Mission Lakes Boulevard and Park, at Veterans Memorial Park.
Ready?
I can't, this is yours, you get to roll it out. Are we just, you put it up there?
Well, no, it could be a special hang-up, so.
Okay.
You don't have enough. You wanna just leave it.
It was in my mom's place, she lives in Jersey.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Finn. This is yours.
Okay, the last proclamation I just want to read, just recently, I'm gonna say that Ms. Paula Terrifog sent me an email about a proclamation about Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I read it, and I thought, "Isn't this really great?", and asked me, "Can we do this?", and I said, "Well, if it's a proclamation, we can do it." Anyway, so we might be the first city actually doing this, not only in the valley, but in Riverside County. So I'm gonna read this, and what it is, it's a proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I just think it really hits, and I really want to see this probably go to each of the tribal members in the valley. It reads, "Whereas the City of Desert Hot Springs recognizes the occupation of California's homelands for the building of our city, and those indigenous nations have lit up on this land since immemorial and values the progress our society accomplished through and by American, Indian thought, culture, and technology. Whereas the idea of Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas in an effort to reveal a more accurate historical record of the discovery of the United States of America, representatives from 120 indigenous nations at the first Continental Congress, Conference, on 500 years of Indian resistance unanimously passed a resolution to transform the second Monday of October into an occasion to recognize the contributions of indigenous people despite enormous efforts against Native nations. And whereas the City of Desert Hot Springs has a strong history throughout the years of supporting the American Indian community and its citizens' advancement in our current society, and City of Desert Hot Springs shall continue its efforts to promote the well-being and growth of the City of Desert Hot Springs' American Indian community and indigenous community overall. Whereas the City of Desert Hot Springs encourages businesses, organizations, and public entities to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, which will be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people on this land, and to celebrate the thriving culture and value of our indigenous nations' add to our city. Now therefore, I, Mayor Adam Sanchez Senior, on behalf of the city council and the City of Desert Hot Springs, hereby proclaim the second Monday of October as the Indigenous Peoples' Day." And it really reflects, it really goes back to the history, because Cabot, you know, was part Indian, and he invited tribes from all over the United States here to Cabot's museum and Cabot's place, and so he was really the father of Desert Hot Springs, but he invited all the tribes here, all nations, and I think that really speaks forward to us. So what I'm gonna do is send one of these to each of the Indian tribes here in the desert to let them know that we really respect their culture and their advancement for the community. So thank you, Paula, but come on up, Paula, you're standing up. Come on up.
I wish this was my idea, but it wasn't. I discovered this because several cities across the country, I don't have them all memorized, but there's about six or seven already across the United States, in cities, not states, of course. This all came about because a lot of people recognize that Columbus, Christopher Columbus, the hero that we grew up in our textbooks, he's no hero. So it's really recognizing that before this became America, before, you know, England discovered us, and Christopher Columbus discovered America, there was an indigenous population here, and that's the American Indian. And so what this movement really is about is replacing Columbus Day. They really want to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day, which I'm all for, because I don't really think we need to celebrate Christopher Columbus. Thank you.
I appreciate it, but if it wasn't for Paula's efforts to bring it to my attention, we wouldn't have been doing that tonight, so thank you, Paula. We're gonna move on to public comments. Yes, Councilmember Pai.
There were some people that arrived after the meeting started, or is anyone here for item number 12? Mr. City Attorney.
Item number 12 is gonna be continued to the next meeting, because we won't have a quorum to address that issue.
You can put in a speaker card and speak for.
My name's Lawrence Minam, I was the applicant and speaker number 12. I have no problem coming back, but I will be out of the country on a pre-planned vacation, November 2nd through the 17th. I'll be in Istanbul and Mumbai, so I will not be available if that's the time you're considering.
Okay. The city manager suggesting that we move it to the 17th. This is the gentleman that was inadvertently left off the list.
I was, yes, admitted inadvertently, and I was prepared to present, but I'm coming into LAX like at 4:45 p.m. By the time I'll be leaving India, literally 20 hours before that, I really don't think I'll be in a good shape on the 17th to present. Can I just do a written submission or something else?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and submit something in writing?
That would be fine.
Yeah, in the interest of fairness, this was, this was somebody who was left off the list, and he's a bona fide applicant.
And I am completely prepared to discuss this issue, I came here tonight to do so. I understand there's not a quorum. I don't mind doing it later, but I'm just not available on the date you're proposing.
Sir, I wasn't trying to start an agenda item, if someone was here for item 12, I just didn't want you to wait till the end of the meeting. However, I understand the situation, and staff can work it out with you.
I appreciate that very much, I will see you soon. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's move on to public comments. Our first speaker is Larry Singh, followed by Mary Hutchinson, followed by Mr. Richard
Mr. Mayor, council members, evening, everybody. I'm Larry Singh, I'm with the Family Resource Center here in Desert Hot Springs, and I just want to invite everybody here and everybody in town to the Resource Fair we will be having on November 4th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Wellness Center, the Boys and Girls Club. We already have 70 different organizations from throughout Riverside County committed to being there, to offer free services on just about any situation anybody can think of. If you have a question and you don't know who to turn to for help... If you have a question and you don't know who to turn to for help, I would say go to the Resource Fair, and I would almost guarantee we'd have somebody there that could help out, help you find the answer to any question you have. Um, we're gonna have raffles, we'll have food, everything there is free. This is the third year we'll be doing it at the Wellness Center. Thank you to the city for having that there. Thank you for the Desert Healthcare District for letting us use the site. And I just wanna let everyone know we will be there and ask you all to attend. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, council, mayor, and staff and residents. I'm here with a little update, um, about a meeting the school board is having here in Desert Hot Springs on November 10th. So in an effort to make the school district, um, the school district board meeting more accessible to Desert Hot Springs' parents and residents, the school district will be holding its November 10th board meeting at Desert Hot Springs High School, and the meeting will be held in the school theater, and it begins at 6 o'clock. So this is a good opportunity for the Desert, the Desert Hot Springs residents to see the board do its work and for those to address any issues that they have. One exciting item that's gonna be on the agenda is a presentation of the new teaching academy that is proposed to start at the high school, hopefully next year. The teaching academy is a collaboration with the school district, College of the Desert, and the California State University, San Bernardino. It's to provide an educational pathway for students interested in pursuing a teaching career. The ultimate goal of this teaching academy is to help reduce the teacher retention concerns Desert Hot Springs schools currently face. This pathway will provide students with automatic acceptance to either COD or CalState to pursue higher education and teaching credentials. Our anticipation is that these students will then come back to where they grew up and teach in Desert Hot Springs. So all residents and parents are welcome and encouraged to come to the board meeting. The agenda should be available, um, on the Palm Springs Unified School District's website towards the end of the week, so you can look at the agenda. And if you have any questions, this is the best part, please contact your board member, John Girardi, at 760-641-9338 for any further questions that you might have.
Can you repeat one more time? Where's the location?
Sure, it's gonna be, um, November 10th at Desert Hot Springs High School, and it's gonna be in the, um, the theater, and it begins at 6 o'clock. So, and I'll have him put it on the neighborhood group, so people can see it and know it. So please come out if you're interested in what's going on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you tell Mr. Girardi thank you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I just want to point out that the mayor is now internationally known as a professional truck fueler.
Certified.
He's certified. He fueled one of the new trucks, and it got gone nationwide. So congratulations, Mr. Mayor, you are now infamous.
I was well-trained by you, sir.
Thank you. The other thing, at the last meeting I indicated, uh, is representing the Renaissance Group and that we, uh, were looking for a new, um, grant potential, and as I indicated to you, it'd be meeting on the 14th, which we did, and we have selected a, a new, uh, grant person, and we're up and running. And as I said, we're also committed to fund this person privately with no public funds for the next two years. So just wanted to follow up on that, give you the, the results. We did select somebody there on board and ready to go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question?
Mr. Cromwell, don't sit down yet. I have a question for you.
Just, I guess the question is, who is your grant writer?
Well, uh, we've hired a consultant that's gonna help us. Uh, we've found that in the grant-writing business, especially for cities with limitations, it's not just a grant writer you need. You need a professional that's gonna step you through the process. Finding the grant is one step, applying for the grants another step, and being able to follow the ever-ongoing requirements of a grant, say you win it. And so we're taking it in a little different approach than we were before. We think it's gonna be successful. And, uh, obviously, we continue our monthly meetings with the mayor. I mean, sorry, Mr. Mayor, you can certainly come, but the monthly meetings with the city manager to keep on track, 'cause part of the problems the city has, it's not just they don't have, um, match money, staff to be able to maintain it is another issue. So we're trying to resolve all that problem, so that it is, uh, transparent as far as the city is concerned. And because of your concerns, Mr. Betts, we've set up this meeting with the city manager, and, and he goes through everything we do, and so I think we're focused on how we can be successful. Uh, other than that, I can, I hope that's enough. I'm not gonna give you the name, so you don't have to ask me again.
You knew I was gonna ask you again.
Oh, okay, well, I'm not gonna...
Okay, thank you.
Not gonna do it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Bill Souza, followed by Mr. Eddie Johnson, followed by Nicole Van Dell.
Mayor and council, my name is Bill Souza, and I'm still a resident of Desert Hot Springs in spite of a few people that wish I wasn't, or at least they wish I'd shut up. Several people came to the podium criticizing Mr. Mattis. Normally, he says that whatever they were saying were untrue, with the exception of Dean Gray. He called Dean Gray a liar. Dean Gray must be public enemy number one to Mr. Mattis. I will quote something that Mr. Mattis said. "He personally attacked me, my church, my family, and my life." Gray must not be all that bad, 'cause he didn't attack the pets. With the people that come and criticize him, normally he offers to meet them for coffee. At the last council meeting, even though it's not one of my 10,000 favorite things to do, I agreed to meet Mr. Mattis for coffee, not to listen to him twist the, the truth, but to accept any proof that he has that what I've posted on, on Facebook wasn't correct. After that, uh, council meeting, I did email a list of some of my posts, and I received an impotent threat, saying that he didn't, or he would possibly sue me for slander. I had the intention of asking the city attorney to instruct Mr. Mattis on what constitutes slander, but I suspect Mr. Mattis knows. I had a good laugh about it, anyway. After that, I canceled the idea of going to coffee, but I agreed that I would still accept any proof he has that what I had posted was wrong. To that, he responded by a half-truth. He stated that on it, on Facebook, that I had canceled the coffee, and his offer to meet for coffee was still open. To that, I say, "I would hope your minister instructed you when you were younger that a lie of omission is just as bad as a lie, straight lie."
15 seconds.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, Mr. Eddie Johnson.
My name is Eddie Johnson, a Vietnam vet, Desert Hot Springs. And I'd like to make an announcement that, to the city council and fellow city officials and their residents. As I stand up here, I'm always hearing every time from five or six months to a year criticizing the city council. All these people were voted in, they were not volunteers to be getting up there and sitting down and disagreeing with everything, but it seems like a lot of people, all they wanna do is slander the city council, and it's getting ridiculous. A lot of these people do not live in Desert Hot Springs, and I think whoever comes up to speak needs to stand up here and say either what city they're from, unless you're scared to announce it, and you're afraid of it. But I think the city council and all the city officials, the police department, fire department, everybody, have done a fantastic job in this city. I've been here since 92, and I think a lot of people that are criticizing the city council haven't been here as long as I have. I've done a lot of events, and there was a lot of city council members, they come to that. A lot of these people that criticize the city, they never show up at my events. I did the wall, Scott Mattis was there at the old time, the past mayor, Yvonne Parks, she was there. I've seen Russell Betts and the other city council members show up when I do my events, car shows. But you never see these other people that criticize the city council. They're all good people. Everybody does a good job, but don't criticize them all the time, because they can't stand up and criticize you back. They have a lot more class. And that's just the way I feel, and I had to make my announcement.
Mr. Johnson, don't sit, don't sit down yet. You, you had a concern about Veterans Park. Did you not have a concern about lighting or the flag?
I was taking care of, uh, there was a light that was out on the, um, it would be the south corner by the flagpole. Oh, I got that straightened out. The other part was, if we could be, uh, put an extra light by the trees on the west side, and possibly a plate to shadow out the light to protect it from the window of that house. It's very dark up there. I'm up there every evening and every night checking out that park to make sure there's no vandalism going on and tagging. If there is, I'm painting everything my way. No initials. But that's what I wanted to do, is add an extra light up there.
A light pole.
Extra light fixture. The actual pole...
You need the pole.
By the trees.
The pole, is the pole ready there?
No, sir.
So you need the whole pole?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
And that would be very much good lighting, 'cause it's very dark on that west corner, inside by the house.
Okay.
Okay.
And, hey, when you get a moment, sit down with Mr. Richard Finn, because he, he needs him, uh, he can use an extra hand when it comes to Veterans Day coming up.
Okay.
Since, you know, we're using your park, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Nicole Van Dell, Andrew Cerner, and then Gerald Pope.
I'm just gonna read my notes from today. Voter registration ends today. So if you haven't registered to vote yet, go online and do it, and if you need your kids to help you, get them to help you. Because right now, we have a failing government. We have a government that is barely competent when it is. I guess...
Hello? Ooh, wow.
I guess when we have like a big parking lot process thing going on, and we get to choose how it gets done, and we're just paving it instead of creating a water reclamation project, I just wonder, how smart are we? And we need to be thinking on those levels, changing our building codes so that everything is off-grid. That's the kind of reality some of us, and a lot more of us globally, are living in every day. And we gotta make our local decisions really smart now. It's okay to be smart. Indigenous Day, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Because until we reclaim that part of our history and heal that part of our soul, we'll be lost forever. As a first generation excluded now, citizen of these United States of America, we the people, we really need to take care of our government and how they administer their jobs. With the Constitution at our heart and our efficiency in our minds, we can solve all of our problems by some of those dates that we got set. Global Citizen says by 2030, we should eliminate poverty on our planet. I'll still probably be alive. I hope you are, too, because we can live that long now, and we can do that stuff. But we gotta have the structure to do it. So register and do, go and vote for your favorite ones. I guess, Mr. Mattis, if I was gonna vote for mayor, I would ask you, would you have done that Indigenous People proclamation and reclaiming the lie we were told at school? Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Andrew Cerner.
Mr. Mayor, council, and city staff, um, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak. I am not going to stand here and call any individual out. I think that's pretty tacky. But one thing that, oh, and I do live in Desert Hot Springs, thank you. Um, one of the things that I do think needs to be addressed is that I am a gay man, and I'm very concerned with a recent Facebook post concerning a pastor that is a spiritual advisor for an individual that sits on the dais. And while I don't feel that a person can control the actions of somebody, when it is made present to what those actions have become, and you haven't distanced yourself from that, I think is a problem, because as a gay person, I feel offended. I just want to give that individual on the dais the opportunity to defend and speak about that action. I want to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Gerald Pope, followed by Renee Hickey and Mr. Lou Stewart.
Gerald Pope. A lot of people been asking me, uh, what actually happened after I spoke last week, and asked that the, uh, Housing Authority be included, uh, in, uh, in the Treasury Department program. And I wanted to report that I did respeak with the, I had a considerable meeting with the, the city manager. And, uh, we concur in our minds that it is a good idea for the Housing Authority to, uh, become a certified community development entity in the, uh, Department of the Treasury, and this is gonna enable us to receive considerable funding. And so, uh, we understand that we need to be involved in the awards management information system is necessary for all people that receive funding from that source to be involved. And we agreed that, uh, the city manager told me that he would have the fin, uh, the person in finance to set us up in that program. So I came away from the meeting very, very satisfied. I understand that this is gonna come before you again in a more comprehensive manner, probably soon after the election, and, uh, we're patient, and we're gonna, uh, provide a presentation for you on that. And by the way, what did happen to the workshop we were supposed to have? You know, the, we were supposed to have a workshop to talk about the properties, the RDA properties that need to be moved right now, and the staff cannot make certain steps until the city council comes together and talks about what they want to do about those properties. And you're holding the things up by not getting together, and I don't know what the problem is, why you can't get together and talk about it. Something, wait a minute, I'm not gonna get that. Now, please, we're gonna have the, uh, workshop to determine the, the best use for those properties. We gotta hire a praiser. We gotta get a, uh, a realtor person to help us with that. I mean, it's a lot of very important information we have to do, uh, work that we have to do. Let's not sit around and not do anything. That's my problem. Let's do something. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I'll make sure the city manager makes a note during his comments to speak to them, Mr. Pope. Thank you very much. Renee Hickey, followed by Mr. Lou Stewart, followed by Judy Shane.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and community. Before much more time passes, I thought it'd be appropriate for me to come in and give you a little, uh, report from the Wardman Park Pool. I do live here in Desert Hot Springs. I am the pool manager, and I have, I'm very happy to report a lot of great numbers for activities and events at the facility. My staff and I were privileged to have 300, and I don't know, 333, truly 33. Children and adults participate in swim lessons. Out of those, out of that number, 75 students were granted partial scholarships. In addition to the lessons, we also offered morning and evening water exercise classes and morning lap swimming for teens and adults. We exceeded... We exceeded sixty participants throughout that, throughout the two months we had. Three. We also hosted lifeguard training for seventeen swimmers. And we held junior lifeguard program through the summer for nine children ages nine to fourteen. There was a total of four hundred and ninety-seven swimmers who enjoyed the public swim time and a total number of noses that came onto our property, onto the deck area and the pool was two thousand three hundred and fifty-four. We had a very nice summer. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lou Stewart.
Honorable Mayor, illustrious Council, hardworking staff. George Orwell said it, if democracy means anything, it's the right to say things that people don't want to hear. Sometimes the truth is inconvenient. In the past few months, I've provided a, a background of Mr. Mattis that has been largely hidden by him and the media. I have provided these facts. Mr. Mattis is a member of a church that has discriminatory, discriminatory policies against members of the LGBT community. Thank you, Mr. Cerner, for your concern. Equality California and Stonewall Democrats have also, have also expressed concern about Mr. Mattis.
Mr. Cerner, let him finish.
He, he is affiliated with an extreme right-wing political group, the Lincoln Club, that holds discriminatory views on immigration, a woman's right to choose, and equal pay issues. He voted for unbalanced city budgets that led the city to the brink of bankruptcy and caused a fiscal crisis. He opposed taxes when there was a fiscal crisis and supports them now that the crisis is resolved. He has, in recent years, done less community service than other council members. He can correct that this Saturday by, uh, working with the pickup crew on the big pickup. He has failed to obtain any funding for capital improvements for Desert Hot Springs from the Riverside County Transportation Commission on which he serves. In rebuttal, he blamed the mayor for being on the Transportation Committee of SEVAG, uh, completely hiding the fact that he was on the Transportation Committee of SEVAG the previous four years and got zero dollars and zero cents in funding. All of these statements are easily researched and factual. None of them involve personal or ad hominem attacks. If I have unknowingly misstated any of Mr. Polit, uh, Mr. Mattis's public policy record, ideology, or affiliations, I welcome his corrections. However, to this point, Mr. Mattis has offered no rebuttal or refutation of the facts presented. He has merely stated, "I am a liar and he is going to sue me." I assume he means for defamation, in this case slander. I have taken his threat seriously and sought legal counsel. I have been advised there are two legal standards for slander, one for private individuals and one for public figures. In short, the standard for private individuals is falsity of statement and for public figures, it is falsity and malice, that is, knowledge that the statements are false. I have been advised that after review, none of my statements even meet the lower standard for private individuals. The most important defense for an action of defamation is truth, which is an absolute defense. I have been advised that your statement that Lou Stewart is a liar spoken in your capacity as a representative of Desert Hot Springs may constitute a slander.
Ten seconds.
And expose the city to liability. I would ask the city attorney, Mr. Quintanilla, to advise Mr. Mattis to apologize and refrain from such comment in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Judy Shay.
Well, I came here all happy, but now I don't know, all this stuff, it's ridiculous.
So how, other?
Anyway, uh, I just heard, I saw something really cool on the, um, Facebook and it was all about CV link and not wanting vehicles on that link. Just think, imagine how much money would be saved instead of a thirty-foot thing with charging stations and all that garbage when we're supposed to just have a bike path. You know, I really believe we should join in as a city council and say, "We don't think there should be motorized vehicles on the bike path like they have in Ireland, Chicago, all up and down the coast, Tennessee, Florida." I've been there and I've seen the people on bicycles and walking. Anyway, I got a lot of stuff. Uh, Women's Club, black and white to raise money for scholarships to send those kiddies off to college. We gotta make sure we, you know, participate in a really fun evening and have really good food. And that is gonna be the sixteenth of November. Now, this is something near and dear to my heart. You see these cards? Okay, I was at the Betty Ford Center yesterday and this is Beverly McKitty, health, uh, mental health case manager, Riverside County Special Education Local Plan Area. Betty Ford, Jerry Mo, National Director of Children's Program, and Helene Fotis, something like that. Anyway, she's the manager of Children's Program. I've been trying to get them to put the Betty Ford Children's Program, the four-day program in Palm Springs Unified School District. I just mentioned it to Mary to tell John. And on the tenth, we all have to go there and say, "You need to put that in our school system now." Okay, it's in desert sand. It's been there for a long time. So we are being cheated once again. Senior volleyball, okay, it's a go, it's a go. You know what? It averaged out to eighty dollars per kid, okay? Eighty dollars, save those kids' life that Renee just told you about. That's all. Can you imagine? You know, you know how much a funeral costs? You know, seven, twelve, ten thousand, and for eighty bucks per kid. But we still need more donations. But thank you, Russell Betts, and this is not a political statement, okay? This is just thanking Russell Betts for another twenty thousand dollars. Here's the check, right here. So we're gonna go ahead and, uh, what I'm doing is introducing, we're introducing, um, senior volleyball, hopefully the first week in November, water volleyball. After that, hopefully pickleball. They have it at Demuth Park or something. It was in the news today. But oh, man, we're gonna have some fun and I'm gonna lose weight. I'm gonna be so trim and all you guys are gonna be invited. And we're just gonna have lots of fun this winter with a heated pool. Okay, I'm sorry.
And Judy, do you have enough money for your pool cover still?
Russell and Renee, Renee has three quotes already. And, uh, we're, and somebody else is supposed to give me three grand, but gave me fifty bucks, so, you know. What kind of dead beats we, no, it's not it.
Five seconds.
Anyway, it's really great. I love you all. I love Lou, even though I disagree with everything he says about Mattis or anybody else.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Rosie Fuentes Terry, followed by Chuck Parker, followed by Michael Harrington.
Hello, City Council. A little anxious there. Uh, I brought you some pictures of Mission Springs Park equipment that has been broken for quite a while. These are picnic benches, picnic table benches with the ends that are sharp, rusty, paint is peeling. Chuck Parker has taken, he used to take his grandson to the soccer park a lot and his grandson hurt himself on this. This graffiti, I checked the graffiti on my way here and it's been cleaned up, but there still is a broken toilet paper holder that looks like it could cause somebody some, uh, an injury if they're not careful. And I'm, and this is in the handicap stall. And here it looks like the park is being watered too much. These are puddles. These are puddles and this was last week before the rain hit us. This is equipment. It's a jungle gym and it has a piece that goes across and that piece has been missing for the longest time, uh, according to Chuck Parker. Because his grandson, like I said, his grandkids play on this equipment. Okay, and I'll show the pictures to the rest of the audience. Now, I did a little bit of research on playground equipment and according to the U.S. Consumer Safety Commission on Public Playground and Safe, Safety Handbook, which is dated November 2010, there are two hundred thousand injuries annually on public playgrounds across the country resulting in emergency room visits. There is technical information online, American standards on, on, uh, testing and materials. So please avoid a lawsuit. I can imagine a toddler who are, toddlers are pretty clumsy, falling and hitting themselves there. That, and so if there's no longer a deficit, let's try to keep our parks in a decent, uh, condition. And I think there used to be a Parks Committee here in the city, but I don't know if it still exists. I went online and I saw the multiple names on there, but anyway, um, this is something I just wanted to bring up because I know Chuck Parker has been bringing this up for years. Judy Shay's been bringing up the problems at Tedesco with the equipment, missing equipment, missing lights. So these are places where the children, you know, children have to have places to play and to enjoy their life, so please help them with that. Thank you.
And the city manager will. We'll handle that. He's, he's actually the park director, so he'll take care of that and make sure it's handled tomorrow as soon as possible so we don't have that liability. So Mr. Chuck Parker's not here, I take it?
Uh, good evening. I'm Michael Harrington and I'm here again just to remind you, um, that, um, according to the federal government, you had one of the worst human trafficking rings right here in Desert Hot Springs, one of the worst in Southern California, um, the odor case. Um, I mean, he's innocent until proven guilty, so I have to say that, but nonetheless, one of the worst right here. So what was frustrating for me is that I used to, before I was on the mental health board, um, for the county of Riverside, I did, uh, serve time, um, on the civilian part of the task force. And, um, now looking back on it, um, now that I'm not on the mental health board, um, I got re-involved at the request of a mayor to give a presentation to SEVAG. And I still want to let you guys know, um, there's some serious problems with the public awareness. We have no public awareness here. Um, there's an exclusive contract with a nonprofit to do all the public awareness. Um, this nonprofit was started by, uh, had a relationship with Jim Batten, then Mary Batten, his wife, got a job there when he's, he was a state senator. And it still seems to go on with nepotism. So these posters, you can't find out where they are. They just claim they put them out, but they won't say where. They refuse. They even say they'll get an, they got an attorney and they won't answer. Yet they, they ask you to, at SEVAG, to sanction their activities putting up these posters. You know, you can go get these posters. They're required by law. Two and a half years ago, only a few hundred went up and half of those actually by law enforcement officer that did it on her own. And I don't want to call her out, embarrass her, get her in trouble with Safe House, but Safe House didn't even do the ones they claimed they did. Someone else did it. Nonetheless, they need to get out here and they say that you can't do it. That's a lie. You can. Because it's a law these posters be up. You can get them anywhere, just like you can get a sign that says you have to wash your, police have to wash their hands. You can, you buy them online, five dollars. I, I understand you can actually go pick these up at the sheriff's. Just go to the sheriff's and get them. Now, I'm not, this is the actual poster. It's a copy of a poster. They're much larger. I do have one, but, um, and you could just go put them up yourselves. Organize a day of action. Let's do it. I'm ready to go. You know, I'll help. And so we need to get this public awareness out here. Don't wait for Safe House and all these shenanigans. They're trying to put through a resolution that will come to you soon that says you really only should go through Safe House to get the posters up. That's ridiculous and I think it's illegal. You are a city. You have the right to enforce your own laws. It's state law. These posters be up in certain businesses. So is there anything I can do to help you get these posters up? It's, it's just, the posters isn't the whole problem. This task force teaches that black people are responsible for human trafficking. They go around and show a picture of Snoop Dogg. I pulled that out when I did the training at India Teen Center. And they also say Asians are responsible, are to be profiled. They go around and look behind their businesses. They teach this. They asked me to teach it. I refused. I did everything else. There's a lot of problems. Take this into your own hands. Let's get it done. Oh, Anali Zavala, I know her background.
Michael.
If she's up there, she's gonna do it. She's gonna do it. I know. I want to talk to you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay.
You're welcome. Mr. Cole Worstel, followed by Jawanza.
Um, good evening, staff and council. A year ago, when the city didn't have any money or they had four hundred dollars in the account, something like that, the, some people were complaining about a contractor, I think in Cathedral City that handles the calls to the police department, the dispatcher, I believe that's the official term. And, uh, some kind, some people were recommending that that contract be eliminated or changed or something because there was some, I don't remember who brought that up, but recently I find that maybe they know what they're talking about back then. I had occasion to go into the police department here and had to use the telephone to talk to the dispatcher regarding a police officer that I had previously talked to and the lady said that he's no, not on duty at this time. And yet I saw through the window, there's that exact police officer who was on duty and I couldn't raise him because she said, "He's not there." Well, he was there. I hope that the staff and council does something to make sure that that never, never happens again. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Jawanza Martindale?
Well, as y'all can see, I'm not a man, but I could be gay. My name is Margaret Webb. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, law enforcement, city workers, and residents. I'm gonna speak for my son because two of the items that he wanted to speak on have been dismissed for this, um, this session. So he's a little bit in his feelings right now because he came as a youth tonight and I, I don't really see anyone except for that baby back there. That's probably younger than my son. He's nineteen. I've been a resident of Desert Hot Springs High, uh, well, yeah, high school too, because I've got the ink pen, the high school, the city, uh, for about four years now. I've seen city managers and other people come and go. I've been through about three or maybe four police chiefs. I, I met this gentleman. I walked up, probably scared him half to death, but you know, we've became family. I'm talking about our fire chief. This gentleman that's sitting next to him, Rich, my car went on a flat and he gave me a ride home. You know, we're family here. When I first came to this city council meeting on my first time coming down here, I caught a bus here because my car broke down in Salt and Sea because I wanted to see what Sony Boney, uh, them did, okay? I love Cher. Chan Pie gave me a ride home and, 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 and her and Adam were fighting over who was gonna take me home. When I needed a place to get a box for my, um, for, for my mail because I wanted to support local businesses, I went to, Scott Mattis owned the, um, UPS store. I went there and I got a box. I could tell you some really funny hoots that, you know, me and Russell have been through. He couldn't get a sign up on a post for somebody else's campaign and I told him, "Well, what's it worth to you?" We started the bottling system. I said, "Well, I need fifty pizzas for my students up at Desert Hot Springs High School. Do we got a deal if I get it up there?" He says, "All right, if you can do it, I'll give it to you."
Fifty pizzas?
Fifty pizzas for my football team. My son is Jahi Martindale, number four. He ran the ninety-yard touchdown about three or four weeks ago. Our team is doing very well here in Desert Hot Springs. I am a team mom, so that means if I see your child out there doing something they have no business, I'm gonna say something. Whether you like it or not, we can fight. Ask the police department, "Won't I come turn myself in?" Okay?
You have to wrap, you have to wrap it up?
I'm, I'm wrapping it up.
Okay.
I've been invited to go to, um, all kinds of events. I was, had events paid for me. There are a lot of people here that I need to personally apologize to. You know who you are. I don't have a hateful bone in my body, but when I get sick... I don't have a hateful bone in my body, but when I get sick, sometime when we get ill, we tend to get a little crabby. And I've been crabby for about nine months. So my baby has been delivered, and I'm here for my city. I don't care who wins, I said this last time. I'm gonna support whoever's running my city. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, Paula Terriffock, followed by Tom Miller, followed by Anayali Zavala, followed by Richard On time.
Good evening, we're already an hour into public comments.
It's okay.
Mine's gonna be very short. DVD's quarterly pickup actually starts this Saturday, the 24th, and the pickup crew's kicking that off with a major cleanup drive on Palm Drive. We've been absent for a while, and I've heard some complaints on some of the lots. So starting at 2:00 in Palm's, all the way up to Sixth Street, Chris Cunningham from DVD has agreed to bring back our five painted dumpsters, placing them in lots on Palm Drive. So you'll see them there Saturday morning. You'll see the crew out there, and anybody else that wants to come with us, we'll take anybody, as long as you have some shoes on and some gloves, we'll take you. So just a reminder, come back out, and it's fun. It can be fun. And we're gonna start at 7:30. We're probably gonna quit around 10:00, so we can go to the art stroll, which is also the same day with Donna's event. I'm trying to coordinate that. And remember that next Monday, the following Monday, which would be the 26th to the, I think the 30th, Friday, DVD's gonna be doing curbside pickups every day. So now's your opportunity to put that big stuff outside, curbside, all that week, that Monday through that Friday after this weekend. Thank you.
Paula, one question. How big are those containers this Saturday?
The bins. We're getting the paint, remember the bins? They're the dumpsters, but there's, he agreed to bring back five.
Five, okay.
So we got some room there. And I offered on my Facebook post, probably nobody read it, but let me just say one thing. I introduced the subject called Adopt a Lot. That's not formal, but this is being discussed. How can we move from the city working with DVD to do the major hauling away that needs to be done? And I'm very excited that Russell Betts brought that to the attention, and that there's been a lot of support to work with DVD for a comprehensive pickup of the city, which is gonna require a lot more than just picking up trash once a week in our neighborhoods. That's never gonna fix the problem, and I could tell you after two years, it's not, even the volunteer groups aren't enough. So in addition to hopefully a really great partnership with DVD, much like the graffiti program that was very successful, I'm looking for a lot cleanup. And I believe the way the lots, especially the ones where all the bushes are, where the stuff blows and collects, is gonna have to be an Adopt a Lot program. So I'll talk about Adopt a Lot late, next time. But what I put the call out for is that anybody this Saturday that will go or pick up, get a large trash bag, pick up a lot in your neighborhood, any lot you like, pick up just the trash by hand, don't bring me a couch, bring a bag of trash, and you will get a free pickup t-shirt just for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Mr. Tom Miller? Okay, Mr. Tom Miller's not here. Anayali Zavala?
Good evening, my name is Anayali Zavala, and I'm a resident of Desert Hot Springs. And I will keep my comments short, as well as I know that has carried on for a bit. But my comment was simply in regards to the grant writing proposal. Once again, I do think our city needs a grant writer. We are leveraging resources that way and garnering free money for projects that we need in the community. However, if we do have the Red Sox group who is willing to provide a grant writer free of cost, I would suggest that we save those $40,000 and spend them on something else that we need in the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Richard Finn, followed by Mr. Bob Terry.
City staff, mayor, council members, and citizens, there was a couple things I forgot to say while I was up here. This Friday and Saturday, there's a wonderful event happening in the Riverside County Fairgrounds that I've helped promote and happen. It's called the Patriot Ride for Our Heroes. It starts at 3:00 PM. At, there'll be concerts, opening ceremony. I'll be playing a set at 8:00 PM at the County Fairgrounds, which is on the Arriba side. And Saturday at 6:00 AM is the big, big event, where we're gonna have a bike marathon, we're gonna have a hero ride, motorcycle freedom ride. We're gonna have the Navy SEALs, retired Navy SEALs, are gonna do a parachute leap fog drop and drop in for the crowd. And they're gonna be raffling off a chance to actually, of course, in San Diego, they don't have the insurance to pull that off over, over top, but the raffle will be for somebody to actually parachute within, in San Diego on their property. So that, that's coming up this Friday and Saturday, so I hope to see everybody out there. What do you mean, no? Who said that? Also, going back to that proclamation real quick, the goal also is to, for everybody in the Coachella Valley to sign this. So my goal is also to bring everybody here and let Desert Hot Springs, we're the first. We're the first city to recognize International Peace Day in the Coachella Valley, and I think maybe the country. I mean, United Nations has recognized it. I don't know how many cities have recognized it. So my goal is also to get Jerry Brown down here, too. So that's, that's, I'm moving forward, and let's set the standard, and let's put the bickering behind us, you know, and show that this city is the Mecca of the valley, and everybody should be coming here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know that about three weeks ago, Darryl Probst passed from cancer that he was fighting for quite a while. He had beat it years ago, and it came back. He was a longtime resident, activist, veteran, and member of the pickup crew, and we had a memorial for him at our house Saturday before last. So we miss Darryl. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, does anyone want the mayor and council member reports? Councilmember Pye?
Mr. Pope.
Yes, ma'am.
The chairman of the successor committee has been gathering documentation. The last of it came in today, and it's, part of it is geared toward the preparation for the workshop. So it wasn't just rhetoric. Ms. Kinky has left, I wanted to say congratulations to her regarding the swim, summer swim program. Ms. Terry, on tonight's agenda, item 11 is about CDBG funds, and they're being requested for Mission Springs Park improvements, including the restrooms and playground equipments. We'll get into more detail when we get to that item. I also want to state, and Donna will tell you, I have no problem putting people, oh God, she's gone. I was gonna put somebody on the spot, but you probably can take care of this. Rising Star opened today, and I'll leave it to the mayor to share about them.
Okay, councilmember Mattis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the ribbon cutting for the clean air vehicles that the city received. Not only was it great for the city to receive, I believe nine vehicles, but Food Now received a new truck, Family Services a new car, the Catholic Church Food Program received a vehicle and multiple vehicles to the Water District. I guess I was right, Dick?
All right, good. So it was, it's good for the whole city, is what I'm getting at. So it was nice to see a little ceremony to show the public that we as a city is moving towards clean air. I attended the Erika meeting, which is our radio system, and it was an update for the city. Not much on the agenda. They try to have two or three meetings a year just to keep things flowing. Most of it was software issues, and they're keeping on the agendas, trying to sell the system to other government agencies or people that have to contact government agencies. And we did sign a deal with Canyon Springs Hospital, which is in Cathedral City, for a couple radios, and that's, I think, in functioning now. So it's a little, little bit of revenue for the five cities that actually run that, and we are one of them. I attended the Whitewater Reserve meeting, that, public meeting that Senator Feinstein put on, myself, the city manager, the mayor, Mayor Potem, and the services administrative director, all attended, and then there was a lot of other people there also from the city, but we attended in one man. We had to leave early after the speech by Senator Feinstein because of a planning commission meeting, but we were able to hear her plans and what she's trying to push through, and we've all been very supportive. I think there's been multiple resolutions from the city council on the support of the Sand Snow Act, which would connect Joshua Tree to the San Gregorio Mountains, 130,000 acres of land that would be very influential into our tourism in the future. I attended Riverside County Transportation Meeting, the general meeting. Now you can watch it live, it's streaming live, just like our meetings here. You can go on to the website, rctc.org, and you can watch the meetings live. I don't know if all the subcommittee meetings will be live, but I know the general meeting will be live, it's the second Wednesday at 9:30 every month. Except for next month because of Veterans Day, they will be moving it to Thursday, which will be held at a different location. I believe it's the Water District in Paris, but you can find it on their website if you're interested. There's a big rail safety program going on right now. We don't have a lot of those issues here in Desert Hot Springs because we're not butted up against the rail. A lot of people traveling along the rail to get to places have to cross rail here. But in Beaumont-Banning, there's a school kid who passed away last year due to him trying to beat a train. It really brought more awareness that a rail safety program had to be developed. And so with Riverside County Transportation Commission taking on the Paris Line, which is a piece of the MetroLink, they wanted to start a rail safety program. So you're gonna see multiple pieces of material come out, possibly if you're, if you use the rail or you're in and around the rail system. We have a link through Sunline that takes you to the MetroLink, or a lot of people drive to the Riverside area and catch the MetroLink in LA. You're gonna see a lot of, a lot of material coming out about that. Also, if you're a vendor, and any kind of vendor, Riverside County Transportation has put out this, I put some cards on the back table there. It's a way to become a vendor for Riverside County Transportation and the protocol that you'll need to adhere to to become a vendor. The MetroLink Paris Line opening is December, so if you do ride the MetroLink and you're looking to use it into the Southwest Valley, which is the, into the Temecula area and so forth, there's gonna be a new line which is gonna link Riverside to just past Paris, and then they're gonna extend it further from there. There's gonna be a ceremony in December, ribbon cutting. They have this beautiful rail station in Paris, that's gonna be the headquarters, and Riverside County Transportation has taken on this link. They've cleaned it up, they've made a deal with MetroLink, and there'll be a new line there, which is good for the Southwest District. If you know, traveling to the Temecula Marietta area or anywhere like that, it can be quite busy congestion, congestion-wise. There was an accident on the 91 freeway. I don't know if a lot of you heard about this or not, about three weeks ago. Riverside County Transportation has been doing a billion-dollar project on 91 extending, or expanding the 91 from the Riverside area to the Corona area. There was a construction crew working in the evening, doing a drill, not a drill, a bridge lifting project, and as they were lowering it, the scaffolding failed. And it fell onto 10 workers. Seven were seriously hurt, nine were transported to the hospital, and I believe it's, seven are still hospitalized as of last Wednesday. 10 were hurt, nine were transferred to the hospital. It's a $1.4 billion project, and they have three separate agencies investigating this, two from OSHA, and then there's one coming from, who investigated the Pentagon during 9/11. That agency's been hired to come and do an independent investigation on this. So anyways, keep those people in your prayers, it's very important. And to answer a transportation question that was asked from there, I was very influential in $32 million coming to this city and two interchanges. So to say that I was not influential in any transportation, that's not true. When I first sat on Transportation Commission for SEVAG and Riverside County Transportation, myself, Steve Pugnay, and Greg Pettis worked as a coalition to keep $32 million here on these two interchanges, so that they were not sent to the East Valley. I think there's actually record of it. I can get a signed letter by the executive director, if that'll help. Also, I was recognized by the chair at the ribbon cutting for my influential influence on keeping that money there and those interchanges getting done over that period of time. So $32 million, kinda say that there was a little bit of effort there. My last comments and last meeting wasn't to throw the mayor under the bus. My comments were that you would find your way to the proper person to talk to for funding coming to Desert Hot Springs. When it comes to transportation money, Riverside County Transportation has a billion dollars to spend. 25% of that money comes through the Coachella Valley Associations of Government on the general fund money that's coming to Riverside County Transportation. The mayor sits on that committee, you need to ask him directly what's coming to Desert Hot Springs. I don't have influence on that. Thank you.
Mayor Potem Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mission Springs Park equipment, how soon are we gonna get that resolved? Any safety hazards eliminated? This has been going on for a long time. Tomorrow's a good answer?
As you know, our park fund right now is upside down, so we're relying on, on the item on the agenda for you tonight is CDBG funding for the Mission Springs Park. So between now and the time we get potentially that money for those improvements, we could see if we can use money out of the Quimby Fund to make those improvements.
Okay, my suggestion would be at least get somebody down there to look, see what the safety hazards are. I tell you, all the public comments that come up to this podium, yours was most appreciated. That's the type of stuff we need to hear about. Thank you. So if you could at least get somebody down there, and I'm not trying to pick on staff, I know you've got a lot on your plate and a lot to do, but if you could make concerted effort to get down there, maybe Rosie could join you and see what the problem is and get it fixed. If there's something that's dangerous and we can't afford to replace it, maybe get it pulled until we get the funds to do what we need to do. Mr. City Attorney, can you give us a quick update on Linda Vista, where we're at on that one? I know I got a call from your associate today, and I appreciate that, just wanted to see where we're at on this.
As you know, they, they have some provincial council representing them on the civil side of it, so they're taking action against the owners. And we are gonna commence a receivership action. That's been, the receivership has been in contact with us, and we're coordinating with the private civil attorney on all these actions.
When do you think that, that action comes before the council?
No.
Okay, so that's just, that's moving?
Yeah, we've already received direction from the council on that a while ago.
Okay, so what we set in motion, got that going, Linda Vista's on a path to be fixed, and anywhere else that we're having similar problems, we can take the same course of action.
Correct.
Because we've got a lot of absentee landlords living outside this city who are creating slum conditions. There was a woman on the Facebook, talked with a video showing rainwater coming in her apartment. She had so many cups, she had to run down and go find some more just to catch the raindrops coming in. And then they found out when part of the plaster fell out, that somebody had used an old picture frame to patch, that old picture to patch the roof, so...
Yeah, and we're actually, I understand that Erica Sacks, who's a deputy city attorney, is setting up some interviews with some residents who reside at Casa del Sol regarding similar issues that we have with Linda Vista.
And Mr. Fire Chief, Casa del Sol, I guess it's the west one. I went over there to visit somebody, I couldn't find their apartment because there was no apartment numbers on there. Maybe you guys have every apartment there memorized and know exactly where to go? But somebody needs to go take a walk through there. If you got an emergency call and you have to find out what the apartment number is, you're probably gonna spend a long time guessing. What's happened is that the numbers up on the, have been sunfaded and you can't read them anymore. So if you could get there, I promised somebody there that you guys would take care of that. Thank you.
Understood.
We're dealing with some issues with school kids walking through residential neighborhoods. I don't know how it is with the kids at the other schools, but I know the schools up there are painted hills and Bella Vista throwing rocks into people's pools and yards that report of a broken window, so I'm very happy to hear the school board is going to be saving us the trip of going all the way to Palm Springs. And anybody in the Rancher Del Oro subdivision that wants to join me there, we can go and figure that one out. When it comes to money and a city, the city council has the right and the necessity to see what's going on. see what's going on and certainly so does the public. So the idea of secret consultants doing grant writing for us doesn't sit with me. I don't think it sits with anybody. Anybody who's, you know, does business with a city knows that this is inherently a bad situation when we got this secrecy going on. I mean, so I don't have to look too far to see where that type of thing has caused big problems in other cities. So Mr. City Manager, as soon as you get the name, move over this secret consultant that wants to do financial work, please share it with the entire council, okay? Thank you. On a happier note, art stroll this Saturday, I think that's October 24, starting at 10. And this is going to be a really big event. The concern is that, you know, attendance, it was really well attended last year, but I think we want it to be bigger this year, so if people will, just everybody in your shot of this announcement, we'll just call your friends and say, hey, there's this art stroll in Desert Hot Springs, this is a really nice thing and let's show up. So it's at Mission Lakes Marketplace and I think we've got everything squared away for making that one happen. Donna's doing all the work on it. On the question of the RDA properties, yes, we do need to have a workshop. I think one of the first questions is always is, when do we have to act? The statement was made, well, we need to act, we need to do something now, we've got to get started. Well, first thing I want to do is I want to know how long we have to do something. I don't know what the timeframe is, I want to know who's supposed to act. Russ Martin is on the oversight board, I don't know if you're the chair, Russ, and has provided some good information. It's a good primer for everybody to read, thank you for providing that. Then we need to look at the market and make sure that we're meeting our charge. So there's a whole bunch of questions, that's very much a needed workshop, but I'm not in just saying, hey, let's go sell this property instantly if there's, if that's not the right thing to do at the moment. Wardman Park Pool is great effort this year, I'm really glad that we didn't fill that in with sand. And Judy, thank you, and Renee's gone, but thank you very much. I got to spend some time down there and you watch these kids, and you watch them start out the swim lessons, they don't know how to swim, and then you're there over the weeks and all of a sudden you see this kid, you watch, learning to his first stroke, he's just swimming underwater and all over the place, and you know what, that's a kid that's not going to drown, so that's really good news. And thanks for the pickup crew. Yeah, it's a big problem. It's, talked to DVD and I'm meeting with them, they can't believe the amount of tonnage that comes out of this city. And I remember when we were working on this thing before and it would take us an hour and that was a much bigger dumpster than the ones that you got coming here, I think that was what your question was, because one sofa would fill, I mean, just, you'd fill, how big was that thing, 40 yard dumpster, it's huge. And you just watched that thing get filled up so quick and in an hour it was done, it was a pretty easy duty, so, because you're just working an hour to fill this giant dumpster. Anyhow, we got a problem, we've got to get that resolved and solved, so anyhow, Mr. Mayor, that's all I got, can't think of anything else.
Okay, thank you very much.
Except for break, maybe, oh, yeah, your turn, sorry.
Yeah, we'll keep it short, okay? And so will the city manager, but.
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Yes, you can.
I want to very much thank the California Foundation for Stronger Communities for their very generous donation and the commitment to this community for $20,000 check and that was, I'd be really remiss if I didn't thank them, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm probably going to just do a lot of thank yous in the community for work that's being done, but before I do that, you know, we're pretty much four months into the budget year now. So if our finance director could maybe just give us an update where we're at right now financially, because I know we've hit some limits when it comes to spending on certain areas like parks, but just give us an overall overview right now, where we're at and our accounts right now.
I think we're right on track, we're on schedule. Right now, I'm already planning for our mid-year adjustments, we will have some adjustments, but the numbers that I'm looking at right now is just more, more about kind of moving money around between, between the funds and less about, you know, I'm not expecting any kind of drastic cuts or any kind of drastic additions. I think we still definitely have some, some issues long-term that we still need to work out, which include the 2020 tax measures expiring and then also some, some long-term liabilities with CalPERS that we, that we have to worry about and plan for, but as far as this budget year, I, so far, knock on wood, everything is, is on track and holding steady.
And can you just share with us right now, how much do we have in the general operating account as of right now?
Right now, we have, we have, I think we have over $3 million. Some of that money is, you know, pass-throughs and we still have our obligations to meet, but I think, you know, we're, we're holding water, so.
Okay.
I'm not losing any sleep.
Not, not.
Not yet, anyway.
Well, if you want to compare it to this time last year, yeah, we were losing some sleep, but it's good to now be able to at least rest assured that we can meet our obligations, which is a big difference from a year ago today. So I really want to, once again, thank Mayor Potem Betts for his diligent work to get the money for the pool, because that was the next big issue I was going to have was, what are we going to be doing upcoming budget year to make sure that Tommy Pool stays open and serving the kids and children? So hats off to Mayor Potem Betts for his diligent efforts and. At this point, all the money counts and works well and it's a good way for you to leverage additional dollars too, because you could always say, you know, match some of these monies and hopefully you can get that pool cover in order to reduce the heating costs also, so that's very important, so good news to hear. Today, we had a meeting with me and the city manager and Janet Goff, just to go over the sculptures that are going to be going up real soon, next week. And I just want to really put a shout out really to Janice and the whole community in cultural affairs. I know Mr. Larry Buchanan is the chair, but you know, it's been a long time coming. I mean, I can remember over 12 months ago, walking up in Yucca, looking at those sculptures and trying to decide on this giant farm, which ones would he be willing to provide us with? But it was Janice's diplomacy and really developing that relationship and trust, because if you don't have that relationship and trust, you just, you can't really get things done. But the fruits of that labor will be coming real soon. And my hats off to Janice for all the work that she's doing. And I know that Councilor Pike talked about the Rising Stars doing, having their students ready for class now and starting their academic classes there, and now we've got some students that are really looking forward to getting their high school diploma, but more importantly, what's special about the program is that if you're a high school student and you don't want to go to College of the Desert, you don't want to go to university, you could learn a career, whether it's solar panels, whether it's refrigeration, whether it's electrical, but you're going to learn some hands-on skills to hopefully have a good career and to provide for your family. And that's what we need with a lot of youth in the community, because they just don't want to go and read books anymore, they want to get hands-on and learn a skill. So that school there will provide them with those internships, with those businesses in the community, so they can be successful. Because we've got to start lowering that juvenile crime rate. And I know the chief has said, it's anywhere between 30 and 40% of our crime is juveniles. And I'm talking about high school and middle school kids, whether it's vandalism, breaking into homes, shoplifting, I mean, they're just, you know, to the point where we need to address that issue. And we can do it utilizing Rising Stars Business Academy. And I think it will really have an impact in the overall community, because all the big investors in town talk about, that's what it, big banks and big investors are looking at, we've got to reduce that crime index. It's really important for people that want to leverage dollars, whether you're building a spa, a hotel, or you just want to expand your business, we need to deal with that crime rate. And I know the chief is really being diligent, I think he's hit the ground running and he's got plenty of gas in the tank and he's here for the long run. So that's a positive and we look forward to working with him. Because those are the type of grants we want to do, it's intervention and prevention grants, because we have to work with these families and like the issue Paula was talking about, half the town is rentals, from home rentals, apartment rentals, and so the issue is with, there's so much turnover. And what do they do when they leave one apartment to another or a house? They dump it in the front yard, in the side lot, over the fence, in the alley. And so, you know, we have a tremendous amount of work to do, but I think we're on the right track. And I think once we all come together and start, you know, paddling in the same direction, we're going to make some inroads here, we really are. And your diligent efforts not to give up need to be commended, because I know there's been times where you said, oh my God, you know, how are we going to continue this? And you've got great ideas, I'm telling you. I mean, we're with you all the way, so don't feel for a moment that there's not a crowd behind you, because there is a crowd behind you and you'll see them all on Saturday, so we look forward to that, supporting you.
He really loves you.
And lastly, I want to thank, you know, Richard Finn and I want to thank Eddie Johnson, you know, two veterans that are here all the time, working on the parks, working on our programs, and especially Mr. Finn, because his overall goal is to build a spa for veterans in the city of Desert Hot Springs. I mean, what is more dynamic than that? A place where they can come, they can renew, rejuvenate, they can, you know, they need healing. And he was talking about especially though, when it comes to veterans who are committing suicide. I mean, what better community than Desert Hot Springs with the best waters in the world for veterans to come and just renew their lives and get back on their feet? So I commend Mr. Finn for that, it's a vision and it's going to happen. And he has my full support and hopefully he has the support of this community, because that would really set us apart from everyone else. So thank you, Mr. Finn, I appreciate your hard work. Now, one of the last things I want to do is, Mr. Pope, I want to thank him for his spiritual guidance, not only to me, this council and the community, because every time I have concerns and issues, I go to Mr. Pope. And, and the thing is that he comes from the south side of Chicago, so he gives it to you, he gives it to you in a way that is really, really.
Right on.
Right on. Judy's from the south side of Chicago, so we've got two south sides of Chicago here, but I really thank Pastor Pope, because he's always there, he's always willing to listen and he's always willing to give a helping hand, and he holds us accountable. I mean, he wants that workshop, we're going to, city manager, I'm going to turn it over to him right now to talk about the Pope workshop. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this workshop, as you know, you heard earlier, you're getting information, you're receiving information, we're putting a PowerPoint presentation together and I think it's important. I think, at least personally for me, I'm hearing different stories and I think there's confusion out there about what all this means. And I'm hoping that this workshop is going to set the record straight for everybody and they can understand what direction we're going, because a lot of that direction is going to come from the council. The Long Range Property Management Plan, as you know, has been approved and by the Department of Finance, by the State Department of Finance. We are now in a position to implement that plan, but part of that plan is to find out what the council wants to do. We do have to hire an appraiser, we do have to follow the law, and that is doing an appraisal on all these properties and then get direction from council on what you want to do with each of those properties. Sell them together in a bunch, sell them separately, combination of both, all that, all those things need to be ironed out, so that when we go out to market these properties, we know what to tell the buyers. We know what to tell them, what we're looking for and what our vision is and what we want out of this thing for us. And make no mistake about this, I want to make this clear, that, you know, all these properties that we sell, it's going to, the money's going to go to pay debt service. It's not going to be like it's going to the general fund and we have money to go spend and do whatever we want, it's to pay off long-term debt that we created as a result of redevelopment activities in past years. And that's, in a nutshell, that's kind of how it is. And so we're hoping, and one of the questions I had for you, Mayor, I don't know if you're still going to do this and maybe you can clarify it for the council, because in setting meetings coming up, I'm not sure if we're going to have the November 3 meeting. If not, we, the next meeting would be the 17th and then definitely the workshop would be obviously after the 3rd, which is after the election. And we would put that meeting out, it'll be a public meeting, a workshop here, I would assume it would be here in Carl May, and have a lot of Q and A going back and forth and getting some clear direction from the council on where you want to go, because it's going to take some money to spend, we're going to have to hire appraisers and come forth to the council with some actions and clear direction and how you want to implement this plan. So with that.
Well, to answer your question, I know I put it before, you know, we had three meetings in August this year, so I asked the city manager if there's anything, if we needed to have a council meeting on election night. And so it looks like there's nothing really.
We had, if you recall, well, let me go down my, my little list here and get into the next discussion. Recently, the Planning Commission made recommendation to the council, they approved or recommended council approve three cultivation sites. So there's still some work and noticing requirements that staff needs to do and talking to all the applicants, they want to come back on the 17th. So there aren't, at least from staff's view right now and looking at the agendas and what's coming forth, we don't have any time-sensitive pressing issues that need to be to the council on the 3rd. It's still available to have it, if you'd like to have it, if you want to cancel it, you can. Right now, I don't have any action items or time-sensitive issues coming forth.
Okay, so as long as there's no time-sensitive items coming forth, well, we will not meet on election night. So, Mr. City Attorney?
Wait, a couple more.
Okay, you got a couple more?
Sorry, yeah, a couple more, I want to give them. Clarification, Mr. Harrington was here earlier, the attorney talked about human trafficking. If you recall, this council adopted a resolution back in July on human trafficking and we forwarded that resolution to SEVAG. I recently received a letter from SEVAG, again, requesting that the council adopt the resolution, which you already did. Today, I followed up with that resolution back to SEVAG, reminded them that the council had already taken action on that, but also, Mr. Harrington is correct, we can have those posters here for people to take. You can download it from the Sheriff's Department website, it's on there, you can download it and print it, but they have actual posters that are a little bit larger, and so I requested that they give us some so that we could also participate in just bringing public awareness to that and we can have those at our counter and people can take those, those posters. So just to report on that, I hope Mr. Harrington hears this, because we did, the council did adopt the resolution on that. We do have, two more dispensary applications have come in, based on council's action of allowing 10 more, so two are, have come into the planning department. We have two additional cultivation projects going to the planning commission in November, so probably either in December, I would assume January, they'll be coming to the council for action on the development agreements associated with those. On Veterans Day event, I, Mr. Finn, will work with you, I know we're less than a month away from that on that project, but please meet with us or Rich and we'll get going on that project for you and help you out whatever way we can, okay?
Do you have my number down?
I have it.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
I just have a couple of comments as follow-up to city manager's report. With respect to disposing of the properties that were firmly owned by the redevelopment agency, I will recommend that to maximize transparency over disposing of these properties, that we put them on our administrative calendar rather than consent like some other cities do, and that we publicize the appraisals at the time that they are sold, so everybody knows, you know, what we're relying on with respect to valuing the property. In regards to the medical marijuana cultivation facilities applications, I believe I mentioned the last council meeting that there is some urgency here from the applicant's perspectives, because there's a new law that takes effect July, January 1st of 2016, wherein the state is going to set up an agency that's going to be conducting background checks and, and the state's going to be involved regulating cultivation facilities. It's not going to take away the city's authority to regulate them or to ban them or to permit them, but there is some urgency from their perspective. However, the reason why these are coming to the city council is because each of them are coming with a development agreement. And in the development agreement, we are making recommendations that the city council insists that the city receive certain fees, mitigation fees, that we cannot otherwise get through the normal process. So you're not going to be looking at the planning issues, because the planning issues are going to be decided by the planning commission, you'll be looking at the financial issues that are coming attached. come attached with that development agreement. And we'll get those to you in advance of the meeting, so you can all have a clear idea of what sort of provisions are in those development agreements.
Now, one question, with the RDA properties, instead of a three-day notice, is that a ten-day notice? Only because I had read in Palm Springs, they had done a short notice, instead of the regular ten-day notice, and that that was one of the areas they had to correct.
We'll definitely follow the law. This is a one-time...
And the law might say ten days, so let's stick to that, if that's the case.
Yeah, we won't do any less, that's for sure.
Well, let's make sure we do the whole ten. Okay, Police Chief.
Good evening. Somewhat good news, we had two individuals that made it through backgrounds. We tendered a job offer to one. There were some issues at the conclusion of the other's background, we did not, sadly, for him and for us, but as I've said, we're not just gonna hire anybody, we want to hire the right people. So, we were hoping to have our new hire onboard, actually, next week, but his current chief asked him for a little longer time, so he will be onboard the second week of November, so we will have him here on the 17th, to get him sworn in. We have four others in backgrounds, so we're hoping to speed that process along as well. Those four have already passed their polygraph, which is usually the biggest hurdle, so we were happy about that. I attended a conference, which is why I was not present at the last council meeting, a joint Riverside, San Bernardino County Sheriff's and Chiefs Conference that was in La Quinta, which was, actually gathered a lot of good information. I know we, from the department perspective and the community, we've done a number of criminal sweeps in the area in conjunction with the Gang Task Force, as well as the PAC Team, and it's still too early to get too involved, we'll be working out the details with the other CV chiefs, I think next week, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that's gonna go well, and maybe have some additional help with traffic on Paul, because that's, again, I know a huge issue, especially with the pedestrians, so we're working with that. As far as our community involvement is concerned, I was surprised he was here tonight, actually, but Commander Hinson, Detective Cole, Sergeant Paez are all volunteering and coaching soccer in the community. We will be, the Police Department will be at the Community Halloween, yes, thank you for that, there are those, I love it that those guys are, you know, investing in the community. We will be at, I know they have several, that were, the Police Department's gonna be at the Elks Halloween event, and we're also gonna be advertising, probably before the week's out, some Halloween safety tips. I'm not gonna get into details with that tonight, but that will be posted on our website, my Facebook site. Judy, are you recording the game?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then I won't, then I won't say anything.
Oh, no.
But, otherwise, that's it, except on a personal note, I will say this, you know, the Kansas City Royals won today, so we're one game away. Sadly, the Kansas City baseball team outscored the football team that played this weekend, so... But otherwise, things are going well, I appreciate the notifications and feedback and emails that I've been getting from council over issues, as well as the community. And on that, lastly, in conclusion, I cannot stress enough, Facebook will not solve your crime. Please pick up the phone and call me. I also, contrary to popular belief, I don't sit looking at my Facebook all day. I do try to check it throughout the day, so if you send me a private message that says, "My neighbor's house is getting broke into, will you please notify and send a unit," I got that this weekend, and I didn't see it for over an hour. Please do not send those. You can follow up with me, but please do not use Facebook or instant messaging to me as a way of reporting a crime. Pick up the phone, call 911, call dispatch. And then on the dispatch, I know a couple of people had issues with dispatch, I actually met with dispatch a few weeks ago, and then we're meeting with them, actually, again, tomorrow. We're gonna start having regular monthly meetings with them discussing the issues, so...
Chief, your email is not on the city's website yet.
Probably with good reason, I'm kidding. I'll check with, I'll get with Luke and have him put it on there, but it's D-Mondary, just like everybody else's is at the whatever, the rest of the city's email, yeah. Or quickly, dhspd.com.
Okay, Fire Chief.
Thank you very, thank you very much. We're working there, there we go. A couple of things I want to bring up to your attention, on the 9th of this month, the PSA finished their CERT training, PSA Academy at the high school finished their CERT Academy, that put us another thirty students into our Paying It Forward program for our future taxpaying citizens of Desert Hot Springs. That brought a little spark of interest for the junior ROTC, kinda going, "Hey, what about me?", and I said, "Well, I'd love to do it, but let's see what's gonna happen." Well, tomorrow, I will actually be down in Riverside in the morning, we will get an award letter for a grant for another forty-two hundred dollars or so for next year, so it looks like I might be able to put the pieces together for the ROTC folks, and we'll move forward on training some more kids in the Community Emergency Response Teams. I want to remind everybody on November 7th, that we are partnering with Red Cross in the Home Preparedness Campaign to install free smoke detectors into our community. We will be canvassing, we've kind of finalized our areas, we'll be canvassing the Palm Drive Mobile Estates, Whispering Sands, and Palm Court Trailer Park, which are all in the city, on the west side of Palms, there about Aqua Soleil area, for landmark, and then in the county, unincorporated area, the homes behind Vista Montana Aqua Soleil, which is on the north border of Camino Campanero, and on the south border, Camino Avantura, and just a little pocket of about four hundred homes in there. I'm still looking for adult volunteers, we've got quite a few of our youth involved between the Boys and Girls Club, our Explorers, our PSA, ROTC, and that, but I'm looking for adults to help with that. And if you, you can get on the Red Cross site here in the Coachella Valley, and I'll get, you can sign up, it's on Facebook, Wayne, from our Emergency Preparedness is another point of contact for that. We're going to do, it'll be basically an all-day event from about 7:30 to 4:00. There is a pre-training meeting that you gotta meet, so we can teach you how to do this, so that when you get there Saturday, it's just we assemble and move out, and start working on hitting the houses. This is a free, doesn't cost anybody any money, just their time, and you guys, there's an education component, there's a documentation, and then obviously the installation, and I need some adults for the installation component. I don't believe I see any of our council members on that, so I'm gonna throw a stick out to there on that one, and I realize it's November 7th, and we will have some old council members and some new council members, so I'm throwing it out there even to our folks that are campaigning for the seats on the city council, please take some leadership roles in that and help us out with the Red Cross on that component. The flooding presentation that Danny Porres put on this morning, one thing I want to clarify for our residents in the city of Desert Hot Springs, is that yes, Station 37 and Station 36 do have sandbags available, but they are only for imminent flooding and to alleviate the flooding problem that is going on. You should be taking preparations now for this, not waiting until it gets wet. There are some homes up off of the, I believe it's Verbinia and San Remo area, that are known flood homes, that are in a flood plain. The city's done what they can to reduce the exposure to those homes, but they sit below grade, and to this date, they have done nothing to reduce their own exposure to flooding. Sorry, you know, and some of those homes have been flooded two or three times. I can't help you if you don't prepare. The sandbags that will be available for emergency are designed to just block the water from going in your door, underneath your garage door. We try to limit those to ten bags for the emergency, there is sand, you have to bring a shovel, and you have to fill them. So, we'll provide you the sand, we'll provide you the bags, if I can't deliver them, I can't fill them. So, just remember, for the emergency, for the imminent flooding that's going on right now, not, you know, two days from now, as preparation of, you know, you take some personal responsibility on that stuff. And I'm having an issue, and I need the community's help, the 8th Street drainage, which is just, if Choya went all the way through, there's actually, it stops, I think, at the 5th and picks up again about 9th, 10th, somewhere up in there, but the dirt, if Choya was to go through, it's where it ends up in dirt, there's the old drainage out there, that's the flood plain that just drains the water off of, out of the city and out into the desert. That's a very known, a well-known area for homeless, but it's also an known area for dumping, and we're having a lot of people just dumping trash. Some of that might be homeless bringing things in, but they bring it up inside the drainage tunnel and actually light it on fire. We will not go inside the drainage, that's an IDLH, or intimate danger to life and health. We will not enter that tunnel to go put out a fire of just junk, but it creates a nuisance to the community, you know, especially if you're downwind. But what I'm asking the community is, stop dumping your trash. We have programs in the city that will pick that up through DVD and the gracious donations of them. If you see somebody out there dumping, try to get pictures, driver's licenses, we have a lot of children activity from the high school, and when they leave, that's a common thoroughfare for them to get home, as they walk in, there's some nuisance activity going on in there. We're doing, we went three times today. So, we need to, I need some help with you from the city to do that. Make the call to the Police Department if you see somebody dumping, if you get pictures, don't paste it on Facebook, if you get pictures of people, get a hold of the Police Department and Code Enforcement, and we'll get up there and take a report and move on it. I, too, also hover out there in the Facebook world, just to see what's going on. By the way, there were some kids throwing rocks up on Mission Lakes about an hour ago. So, I do hover on that, I see the same thing, I chime in, you know, "Stop posting, dial 911." You know, I want to see, I dialed 911, and this is what I saw, that's what I want to see. You know, let's get a hold of our city. I see a lot of people commenting and seeing problems, but let's, you know, take back your city, start being sheepdogs, quit being sheep, all right? And then, and last thing I want to bring up is, Stephen Otero is our Fire Safety Specialist, local fire marshal, if you will, in the city, and he's been hitting our businesses in the town, and he's been very successful in weeding out businesses, people that are in business in the city, about twenty to twenty-five, and City Manager is well aware of this, that do not possess business licenses. They're operating in our city, making a living, and people are working for them, living, making a lifestyle, and that's what we want to encourage, but you need to do it properly and through the laws and municipal code that are established for the benefit of our community and the benefit of the, and safety of your patrons and your employees. We will find you, but we're asking you to comply when you are discovered, or better yet, come in and do it the right way from the get-go. And with that, that is my...
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we'll go ahead, take a ten-minute break, and then dive right into this administrative calendar.[1395.88] If everybody could please take your seats. We'd like to move forward with our first public hearing. Item number one is authorization to join the statewide community infrastructure program, a joint power authority. This is going to be handled by Administrative Services Director Joseph M. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This is a program, the statewide joint powers authority, which is sponsored by the California League of Cities. And this is a program, it's an economic development incentive program. It would allow developers another financing option for projects. So they would be allowed under this program to finance capital impact fees and also right away improvements such as curb gutter, sidewalks, streets, traffic signals, landscaping, et And as everyone here knows, that those costs can be pretty expensive. And so what the program does is it uses tax-exempt financing, which usually has lower rates than private financing or just regular bank financing. And for certain, it works well for certain sized projects. They do do projects as low as a million dollars, but they generally like projects to be in the range of two to $10 million, and it's for residential and commercial projects as well. And how the program, how the program works specifically is an assessment district similar to our CFD is set up for just that location, and the assessment gets recorded on the property, and that's how the bonds are paid back. The city receives the fees upfront, so there's no, there's no risk to the city. There's no deal between the developer and the city. It's all done through Skip program, and it's very little work to staff in getting the paperwork And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions about the program.
Okay, thank you very much. So we opened the public hearing. We got our staff report. We'll take public testimony. I have one speaker, Nicole Van Dale.
I was going to ask, what is it? Anything that comes on there that says statewide community infrastructure program? I get red flags everywhere. Anything that sounds like that, sounds like something I don't want to be involved in. I think it's what the governor announced, what the RDA went into or something like that. The thing that we need to bear in mind when we look at these kinds of deals is what kind of structure that that is actually supporting. Because when we go through these finance things, we attach to other documents and treaties and agreements between states and on those levels. What kind of obligations? You said that the city has no obligations except to receive the monies. What do we have to do? Do nothing? Get our community involved? I guess that's what I was missing from the report, is a lot of details of how a thing like this is put on our agenda for authorization when we haven't even discussed it in our community. And I think that's where my red flags are really coming in, because with some of these agreements, and you've got TPP going on, and you've got the Organization of the American States, I worry about these state-level agreements. So that's where I'm coming from, but then I'm not a citizen anymore. Thanks.
You're welcome. Since I have no more speaker cards, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll have City Council discussion. Mayor Potem Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question is, who placed this item on the agenda?
That was a request by me to the city manager.
Okay, because this seems to be a significant policy issue, and that should only be a council member, two council members of the mayor, just be placing this item on the agenda. You went ahead and did a public hearing notice on this also?
That's correct. That's a requirement of the program.
Okay. My first point is, this is something that is a significant policy issue change, and probably should have come to the city council through either a, some type of presentation and getting a sentiment of the council. Do you want to go ahead with something like this? I don't like to see this stuff just automatically dropped on the council like this. So that's done, I'm done with that comment. There's all kinds of statements in this that are just really troubling, but mostly is, I haven't had a chance to dig into this. I've done some independent research on this, you know, since we got the agenda a couple days ago, but this is a pretty big issue. First off, you get for home buyers, paying for the cost of public infrastructure through a special assessment is superior to having those costs rolled into the cost of the home, although the tax bill is higher. So the policy decision for the council is, do we want to defer cost onto the tax bill? Now, right now, my Prop 13 tax is about, I'm just going to say $900. And by the time I get my total tax bill, I'm at about $21, $2200, with all the extra special fees and assessments, everything else to go on. And if we ever, as a council, decide we want to go look to property tax as another means to raise money, the public is going to rightly say, my property tax is already way too high, even though it's all these other things. So now you're going to have a situation here where somebody comes in and buys a home, they think they're buying at a certain price, when all the other costs associated with that home have been thrown into the property tax bill. Now, I don't know exactly, I'm generally thinking that's a problem I have for years. I don't like that arrangement. But the point is, this is something that takes a whole lot more thought than this thing just being dropped on the council three days before we're asked to vote on it, and then, you know, resolutions and public hearings and everything else. So I would obviously wait, see what the other council members have to say, but I, without getting too long into this, I would say the best thing to do on this would be to continue it, give the council some time to digest it, figure out, weigh in on these policy issues and ramifications, and do a little bit more time to research. So I'd hope somebody would join me in continuing this item for at least 30 days.
Councilmember Pye.
Mr. Betts, I don't disagree with anything you said, but I just have a different thought. One, with respect to agenda items, the policies and procedures states that the city manager can put items on the agenda. With respect to, Nicole, your question, what, if a developer chooses to go this way, then the developer will sign a contract with the city stating that that's what they want to do. This is a financial benefit to the developer. And so far as assessment on home buyers, the home buyer will have to, these development fees are going to be passed through to the buyer, period. So what this is, is either they pay it all upfront, which may affect their ability to buy, or they pay it over increments, thus the assessment. And it's not a mandate, it's voluntary, and it's not something that's new. The closest thing, and this probably is not a good example, and I'll probably have to ask the administrative services that I can think of, is the same situation with pooling money for CalPERS for retirement. And that's all I have to say.
Weighing back in on this one, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Mayor Potem Betts.
Thank you. Just to clarify the policy, of course, the city manager can put items on the agenda that are administrative in nature and which he needs the council to act. Policy is strictly the domain of the city council, and this is clearly policy. So that's in the policies and procedures. And by the way, now that you mention that, Councilmember McKee and I were planning to bring that back on the 17th for you, completed and ready to go. So just letting you know, that's long delayed, but that's in there, I assure you. The rest of it, the point is, this may have some good benefit to people, particularly developers who have these huge costs. This may be another financing mechanism. I don't have any problem with that. I need to look into it, because there are ramifications for the city. That's why I'm requesting that we give this another 30 days. I don't think there's any sense of urgency on this one, that anything's going to die or go away if we don't act on this within 30 days. If it came to us that quickly and that urgently, well, there's another flag. You know, I don't like stuff getting rushed through, and we should have had plenty of time. This thing didn't just hatch overnight and come forward. So I'll make a motion to continue for 30 days. That'll provide a full council the opportunity to weigh in, and council members adequate time to look into some very detailed issues on this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I know Councilmember McKee's not here, and normally, you know, he really gets concerned on items of this nature. But just for clarity, Mr. Tanner, are we fine if we wait 30 days?
There's no rush to do the program. This is something that I've done in other cities, that it's, and gotten approved there, and so it's just, it's completely optional for the city to participate in if they choose. And if I may just kind of clarify some of the comments, and I think Councilmember Pye kind of hit the nail on the head, is that this is a program through a joint powers authority, which is separate from the state of California. And through the joint powers authority, they have an agreement with a number of financing banks to provide the tax exempt bonds. And also that, excuse me, that this is totally optional for developers, and it's just to give them an additional option for financing to pay for their project. And when you're talking about development projects, a lot of these projects, developers look at what their bottom line return is, and if it doesn't meet their criteria of, depending on the project, whether it's 9% or 12% or 15% return on the project, they won't do the project. So if we can just kind of edge a little bit closer so they can get their returns, then we're that much closer to getting projects done. And the program is very little work from staff, very, probably just some routine agenda items, and the deal is done between the city and Skip. And the city receives all their money upfront, and the developer is the one who's on the hook to pay them back.
So Mayor Potem Betts.
I just want to make it clear, I appreciate the time the staff has put into the report, the extra clarifications they got, all that. That's the starting point for me, not the be-all, end-all of this discussion, certainly not something for me to vote on at this point.
Okay, and there's no other council comments? Okay, seeing none, everybody please vote. Mr. City Clerk?
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember McKee absent.
Okay, let's move on.
Move consent.
I want to pull number four.
Move items five and six. Or three, five, and six.
We have a motion. What number do you want to pull?
Seven.
So we want to pull four and seven, Mr. City Clerk.
For discussion.
Okay. Motion second, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Pye.
We did just pass number five, but I'd like to ask Mr. Tanner if he would tell Ms. Patricia White, "Thank you for the added notes that she put on the contract management report. That was very helpful."
Okay, so we pulled four and seven. On four, resolution creating an emergency reserve fund policy. Question is for the city attorney. Have we actually set up that restricted fund yet?
At the last council meeting, the council voted to set this up, and because we needed something in writing, we brought it back for confirmation by the council as to whether this is exactly what they wanted.
Okay. So from here, where does it go? Do we actually bring back another item, setting up that fund, or is this administrative part of the... of the city?
If you vote to approve this, this is setting it up.
Okay, this sets it all up?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, good enough. Let's move to item number seven.
Mr. Mayor, you need a...
And move to approve item number four.
I second it, but I would suggest that you recuse yourself, Mr. Mayor.
Is that necessary?
You recused yourself last time.
Mr. Quintanilla?
This, I do not believe the mayor has a potential conflict here, because the tax is not being changed in any way, so there's not going to be a material financial impact one way or the other on his current employer, because the money he has to pay that amount...
Why did you advise him to recuse himself last time?
Oh, I...
He did recuse himself.
Oh, did he?
I was just making a suggestion.
That was his choice.
Yeah.
We're just trying to...
That's his choice.
Yeah, we're just trying to help out here, so, either way.
Okay, motion passes with Councilmember McKee absent, of course. Item number seven.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that this one be pulled.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to note that we have, if you've tracked these, this is the famous treasurer's report that you can track each month. It's provided by city staff. Thank you very much, you do a great job. Right now, it's showing in the general fund, 4.67, .782 million, but a consolidated general fund amount of $3,951,663.28. If you had followed this for the past six months, you'll find out that it's been generally hovering right around that amount, 4.3, 4.1, it dipped down to 3.7. Last meeting, and now it's up, the last reporting, and now it's up to 3.9 million. Now, you can call it whatever you want to, but we've got a little bit of extra money in reserve. It's not in a separate reserve account, but there is money that we're functioning with and providing that breathing room. So I'm doing nothing more than pointing out that, for the public, since there's been so much discussion on this, that the consolidated general fund is now at 3.95 million. Or, yeah, 3.95 million.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Mattis.
Just so that we're not misleading the public, Mr. Betts, $3.9 million as of August 31st. That's not what we have today. This is the treasurer's report as of August 31st.
That's correct. And as of August, September 31st, and, or whatever it was...
The last report, last month, we were around 2.5.
Yeah, March, April, May, June, July, August, September, each month is shown about the same number, hovering around 4.3 to 3.7 million.
You said today, but this isn't today's report.
Okay, excuse me. As, the reporting as of August 31st today is 3.9, which I guess that begs the question, did you spend 3.9 million? Did you spend 3.9 million this month? Is this all gone?
I certainly hope not, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Motion to approve. Mr. Mayor, this is received and filed.
Okay, that's even better. Let's move on.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I just remembered, part of the consent calendar was item number three, which is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend local business preference program, if I can just read that by title. It's an ordinance to amend Sections 3.44.150 and 3.44.160 of Chapter 3.44, Purchasing to Title III Revenue and Finance of Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, relating to the local business preference program. And so the ordinance will take effect in 30 days.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, that's what shifted the local preference from just all the Coachella Valley cities specifically to Desert Hot Springs businesses, correct? Okay, I want to make sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Let's move on to administrative calendar. Continued from October 6, 2015, the grant writing proposal, City Manager Martin Magana.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Potembet, members of the council. If you recall, last, a couple weeks ago, October 6th, the council considered a proposal from California Consulting, and as you know, you know the history, California Consulting was contracted out by the Renaissance Group. That contract has terminated. The California Consulting submitted a proposal for the council to consider. Council directed staff to go back and find funding to meet that request. Staff went back, and there was $40,000 that was needed to cover the remainder of the fiscal year if the council still decided to fund this. And so money would come out of, some money would come out of MetroScan, which is a county database system that we use, used to use, to look up property information. And then there was about $8,500, $5,000 that came out of MetroScan, $8,500 came out of the American Care Act tracking software, which is another software that we use to track and report health benefits required by Obamacare. And the remaining of the funds would come out of salary savings that we have from departments, police department, or community development, and whatnot. So should the council approve the grant writing proposal, then approximately $40,000 would be taken out of the general fund to fund this contract. And that concludes my report.
And so basically, the current contract expired already, right, this month?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
The current contract expired October, actually, today, I think.
21st?
Five o'clock, yes.
Oh, okay. You know, I pretty much agree with the comments that Mayor Potembet made about us, the city, knowing all the details of the grant writer and the process, and having it operate under the city's auspices. Because it seems to me that, I really don't like seeing going back on this route again, where we're working with an outside group, yet we still don't have direct control and say about the grants that we're writing. And to come back again and go through this whole process, to me, it just seems like we should be the ones really in charge of it all. And what concerns me the more than anything is the police department, and making sure that we're funding everything possible that we can, plus dealing with that youth crime and violence that we have to get our hands around, because when people talk about violence in Desert Hot Springs, they're really worried about our young people, 18 and under, that basically get out of control, and all of a sudden, they settle all the differences on the streets of Desert Hot Springs. And it impacts the families, the neighbors, and the overall health and well-being of our community. And I really wish that we would have been moving a little bit quicker when it comes to the grant writing in that area. But personally, well, my policy would be for us as a city to really have the direct control and provide the guidance of a grant writer. And I'll just turn it over to Mayor Potembet for his comments.
First, I want to thank staff for getting back to us and answering the question, is there available funds for this? And the answer, I guess, is yes. I'd like to make a motion that we continue with the present grant writer, California Consulting, only for so long as an RFP process can be implemented and successful bidders sought. How long do you need for that RFP process?
Well, 60 days out, and then 30 days for us to process.
So 90 days?
90 days.
Yeah, so continue with California Consulting for 90 days, since they are the ones that are in the trenches right now. We don't want to stop grant writing efforts, and then go out to an RFP inviting all grant writing firms to apply, and making sure that they actually have grant writing experience would be a good idea.
Okay, Councilmember Pye.
A couple, we, in my opinion, we did, well, first, let me ask this question. Is anyone from California Consulting here?
I do not see anybody here from...
Okay. And California Consulting offered, should we continue with them, that they would reassign the grant writer. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Cromwell, should we take Renaissance up on their offer? Would you give us the name of the grant writer?
It's a difficult question for me, because I have to go back to our group and ask the question. We were asked by the people we interviewed not to be identified, and we're fulfilling that. The city is directly involved in what we do on a monthly basis. They approve everything we do.
Okay, wait, wait, wait.
So I'm just trying to answer some of the questions, because they're just amazing.
There's just one, there's just one, right now. And so you're saying that if we approve the offer of Renaissance, we will never have the name of the...
No, I wouldn't say that. I've heard your request, and so I'll go back to the group, and I'm not going to give the name out now, because we're honoring the person that we've hired. That was the request. There didn't seem to be any reason. You're getting the same information as you got when you were working with the Renaissance Group, but it's really your call. We've already made a commitment that we're going to carry this process for the next two years with private funding. And there, I can... Sorry.
Walk with me for a moment. There seems to be a contention on the council about who the person is, and that's all I'm trying to focus on with, right now. And I don't know if I got the answer, but thank you.
Well, I can assure you, it's an extremely experienced local person that's been here over 30 years, and clearly understands the city's issues.
And all I'm asking, if we accepted Renaissance' offer, will we ever have the name of the person?
Well, I can't speak for Renaissance. I mean, I'm sorry, you're talking about Renaissance? I will ask. I said I would ask the group, because part of the hiring process, that was the request of the person, and we're just honoring, it's a business arrangement.
No, I understand that, but...
But, so I can't answer the question. I'll go ask the group to ask the grant person, and if that's what they want to do, fine. If they don't want to do, we will probably turn it down. It's a business, it's a business transaction we have, Renaissance Group, private sector, with someone that we've interviewed and hired. So it's hard, you put me in an awkward space. I'm not trying to be arbitrary.
And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to put you in an awful space, and we're about to start repeating ourselves, so thank you.
Okay.
But my understanding is that the governance piece of it would continue, whereas the city manager is meeting with the grant writer and representatives from Renaissance on a monthly basis, going over what grants are requested by the city, and then also the status thereof. Okay. I have a concern, and this is not a dig on staff, but where you found the money for the next eight months. The county database system that is used by staff to look up property information, we're trying to become development-friendly and economic-friendly, and we're going to stop using a tool that would be helpful toward that. My other concern is about the, the tracking equipment that keeps us in compliance with Obamacare. So we're losing, in my opinion, we're losing two important tools to do business. Tell me if I'm wrong. The other side of that is, we're talking about 5, 8, 13, 5, $13,005 for eight months, and then send it out to bid, and then we're going to have to try and find more money to compensate for this. When we have an offer for staying out of the city's pocket, what government, governance, for two years? Now, I'm just confused when we talk about we have a balanced budget, and then we start pinching at it. That just doesn't feel right. And I'm concerned about California Consulting not being here. I'm concerned about them deciding that they are going to assign a different person than what they had. And I will tell you, be honest, I don't know what it is. I can't put my finger on it, but I think something's fishy going on. I've had people try to talk to me, and I've told, and tell me their side, and I've told them, "I don't want to talk to you." I will get the answers from up here, and anybody that's trying to tell me something, I wouldn't listen. But California Consulting was here asking for us to keep them and give them justification for it, and then they're not here today. I may come back, but I'm just frustrated right now.
Okay, Mayor Potembet.
First off, the motion is to go out to RFP, bring in all comers, invite every qualified grant writing company. We've had two before, they were rejected because we decided we were going to do it for somebody local, had absolutely zero grant writing experience, and even put that on their resume, okay? This city needs to do it properly. And I'm going to tell you, secret deals, and especially secret deals involving money, have no place in city government. I am not going to vote for this, and nobody up here in our right mind should. You can have legitimate concerns over the budget, and I'm hoping the city manager will answer your questions, those are good questions, but I am not going for some secret society, whatever you want to call it, that doesn't want to tell me who it is, because we have not had any interaction on these grants. This is for policy to be set by this council, and it is just a really bad suggestion. I think somebody should have been embarrassed to even stand up and suggested.
Okay, any further council comments?
I do. And I think there may be further conversation on this today, and I would just like to respectfully ask Mayor Potembet that we have a discussion and leave attitude someplace else.
You know what, there's a place for attitude right now. Secret deals involving money and public government, with everything else that's going on in this valley and in the news, sorry, I got attitude, okay? That's the way it goes.
I accept that, but I, all I had to do was ask.
Well, discuss away. I told you, you raised some very good points, and the city manager can tell us, are you doing away with two important tools?
One of them, the MetroScan, yeah, we use it. It is county data that we use. There's another software that we do use as part of HDL, where we get our retail sales tax reports. They have a software too that we could use that, it helps us. I mean, we can draw the information that...
I'm assuming you didn't offer up two suggestions that were dire tools, that were going to leave you crippled. You went and searched and found what would provide the funding to cover this so that we can keep this under our control. And the amount we're talking about right now is three months.
Well, I'd like you to clarify your motion, because if I'm reading this correctly, you're saying continue with California Consulting, but we don't have a contract with California Consulting. We, are you just requesting that we go out to RFP for 90 days and bring it back?
Yeah. You know, I don't have any particular love for California Consulting. I'm just under the assumption that they're here doing work, writing grants, they've got stuff in progress, and we don't want to just cut off the grant writing and not have anything for three months while we go out for RFP. That's my thinking on that.
But we don't have a, but the city doesn't have a contract with California Consulting. The contract is between the Renaissance Group and California Consulting.
Are they willing to enter into a month-to-month agreement with us for three months until we go out to RFP?
If you would amend your motion. I just wanted to clarify that, because when I saw that on the screen...
That was in the motion, yes, thank you.
That was incorrect. Okay, thank you.
So the city clerk can amend that, change the language?
Noted.
Okay, Councilmember Mattis.
I wasn't going to weigh in too much on this. I think I heard all the answers I needed to make my vote last meeting. California Consulting made a presentation. I liked individuals that worked there, but I wasn't impressed with what they had accomplished. Obviously, they were working with the Renaissance Group, who was paying for this. It was no secret, they were open to the city, and they were supposed to meet with the city. They weren't meeting their obligations, and the contract ended, and they weren't renewed. I respect the individuals that do not want their name made from the Renaissance Group, but I would like you to ask the question if they would, if this item moves forward in either direction. I understand the hesitation out there. There's been people that have contracted to the city that have been tore apart... There has been people that have contracted the city that have been tore apart by council members and individuals up here because they worked for the city, I wouldn't blame. It could be nerve-wracking for certain businesses to be public. I get it, so I understand that part of it. I'm not going to support a contract to somebody without an RFP, and if Renaissance Group's going to pay for it, I can't see why we couldn't work out an MOU or something with the city if there hasn't already been, that, you know, giving the service free to us, I can't see why it wouldn't be something that we would, we would take. So, but I would, I would encourage the city manager to have an MOU with the Renaissance Group if that process ends up happening. The attitude doesn't need to be up here. We can debate professionally and with decorum, and we can each have our own opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor moves a question.
All right. Everybody, please vote.
Motion fails, two-two, with Councilmembers Mattis and Py opposed, and Councilwoman McKee absent.
Okay, let's move on to item number nine. Approved purchase of Jeffrey Spakes art for a cost not to exceed seventeen thousand from the Arts and Public Places Fund. This will be handled by Acting Community Development Director Rich Malikoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Rich, I'm sorry. I just need a point of clarification that was brought to our attention during the break. On page 132 of your packet, 131 actually is the application, and the applicant name is Jeffrey Spakes, and on page 132, it's signed as Jeffrey Spakes has signed as property owner, but he is the applicant. I just want to clarify that. Janice is not the applicant, just for the record, so clarification. Thank you. Rich, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Today, we have a recommendation for the purchase of Jeffrey Spakes' art. It would consist of six sculptures of butterflies fabricated by Mr. Spakes with a cost not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars. The CCAC had been discussing the sculptures with Mr. Spakes for the past year. He's a prolific artist with private projects, I mean, with, has done private projects for the cities of Palm Springs, Palm Desert, Washington DC, and Melbourne, Australia. He's not requiring that we identify the locations right now. The amount of money requests includes the art, lighting, equipment rental, which would include things like a metal cutter, which is something that he doesn't have on hand but would need to rent. And the, on June 10th, the CCAC recommended unanimously that this be approved. Let me show you the sculptures. These are just some examples of the butterfly art that, that would be what he would fabricate. This is one example. Number two. Number three. Number four. Let me go back. Four, five, and number six. Now, there's, on the fiscal impact, I just wanted to clarify a few things. So, it's seventeen thousand dollars from the Public Art and Public Places Fund. No general fund money would be used. As of now, there's fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars in the Art and Public Places Fund that's committed to projects. If Mr. Spakes' project is approved, that would be another seventeen thousand. That would bring the total to seventy-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-five, leaving a balance of one thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight. And the commission also had recommended that within what was already approved, that if, on projects that might overrun, like the DABA, if it did overrun, that there's money available within the fund to actually borrow from one project to put towards another, that it'll temporarily be there, and then shift, and then it'll be put back as soon as additional money is deposited in the account. But there won't be any, excuse me, I'm sorry. So, there won't be any, the money that they have will cover from the Public Arts Fund, and the money that's not being used on one project could be used on the other, and we won't lose any money on it. So, there's one thousand, eight hundred ninety-eight dollars that'll be left in the fund. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have one, Mr. Malikoff. Clarify exactly how many butterflies?
Six butterflies.
Six butterflies, okay. And then, like you said, the site hasn't been...
He's, he's actually agreed not to have any approval authority over the site. We could decide that later.
What's the process for selecting the site where the butterflies go?
The site would have to be chosen by the Community Cultural Arts Commission, and then it would be, the final action would be approved by your, by the city council, just like we did with the DABA statues.
All right, we have a couple of comment cards. Our first one is Jeffrey Spakes.
Hi.
Good evening.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that Janice did, these bugs are huge, okay? They're, they're big. They're my big butterflies. I started doing them when my mom passed away, as a memory to her. Since their birth in 2001, they've been featured at the Pasadena Showcase House of Design 2004. They're all over the world. At a group home, and I taught my at-risk teens how to make butterflies, taught them how to weld. These little bugs have done a lot of things, and these big ones are mine. So, I've had a vision for these when I started, was to get a small town that would adopt them. Cool little thing, you can get people that come in and adopt more of them, more of them. Have a little butterfly trail or something like that, we can go along and find them. These sculptures are great too, because at night, they're incredible. I plan on lighting them with multi-colored lighting that changes at night, so the impact is really incredible. During the day, they're mesmerizing. At night, they're just magic, so. I'm here if you have any questions. I'll gladly answer them for you regarding my pieces. Thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
All right, you're welcome. Janice Goff, member of the Community and Culture Affairs Commission.
Thank you. Good, good evening, Mayor, Council, and valued staff. I was so excited to meet Mr. Jeffrey Spakes. We met over at the Backstreet Gallery, where he, he did have his business, has since moved to Ramon and Jean Autry. The magnificence of these butterflies, and even other sculptures that Mr. Spakes has done, is, is really incredible. I'll have to say, these pictures do not do them justice, because they are huge, large butterflies, and they kind of, when they're in the wind, they flicker a little bit, and those beautiful lights on there. I think it will really create a mystical trail in Desert Hot Springs, and people will come here to see these beautiful butterflies, and, and I've been very supportive of this. We've worked on it, and I hope you love it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all, Janice, for your diligent work on this project. Let's start off with Mayor Proten Betts.
I sat in this room, I don't know what it was, five, six years ago, whenever the Art in Public Places ordinance was battled out. The diocese didn't used to be here, it was over there, but I can still remember the room packed with people, saying, "We want art in this community." And I know we've had some other projects, we've had some big murals, and we've got the Simi Dabas coming, but to me, this moment right now is, all that hard effort to get some funding in place, is like, this is like a really, really good moment. This is closure. We've got art coming to this city, and I'm really happy to, that you came here and explained what these are. And Janice, for your efforts, Larry, and the commission, you guys are doing great work, and I would like to wholeheartedly offer a motion approving the Community Cultural Affairs Commission recommendation.
Okay, we've got a motion.
And just one other point of clarification for the public that's hearing these dollars. This is a dedicated fund. If we do not spend this money on art, it goes back where it came from, so let's make that clear.
Okay, Councilmember Py.
Mr. Spakes, I like your work. Ms. Goff, when the, I have a favor to ask. When the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission decides on the location of the butterflies, would you please get input for, from the police chief? And the reason why I'm asking is because you said they flitter, and he said the lights, they change. I just want to make sure wherever you decide to recommend to the council for approval, that the police chief gets to weigh in so far as public safety, traffic issues, or what have you. Thank you.
Okay, with that, everybody, please vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously, with Councilmember McKee not present. So, I guess the last question, what's the timeline on this? As soon as possible? Right away? Soon as you drink that coffee? Okay. Oh, okay. Well, even for the new year will be fantastic. Appreciate it. Okay. Well, thank you much, Mr. Spakes. Appreciate it very much. Let's move on. Let's move on to item number 10. Standard software maintenance agreement with New World Systems. Be handled by Administrative Services Director Joseph Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Luke Rainey will be delivering the staff report on behalf.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proten, and members of the council. Before you this evening is a standard software maintenance agreement that was provided by New World Systems. New World Systems has been used in all city departments since January 2010, and is primarily used as our financial, community development, and code enforcement software. The updated agreement outlines annual costs for maintenance from 2015 through 2019, which totals one hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars. And in your staff report, there's a chart showing each of the annual payments will be presented as line items in their respective fiscal year budgets, and will, the future amounts will require council approval to appropriate the funds. Also, in the agreement, section eight, there's a clause allowing the city to terminate at any time, provided that it supplies a ninety days written notice. So, staff is requesting authorization for the city manager to execute this agreement, and I'd also like to quickly introduce you to Terry Minter. She's our account representative, and she has been since early last year. And if you have any questions for either of us, this concludes my staff report.
Okay, thank you very much. Just stay close. Councilmember Mattis.
I have a direct question, I just have a comment. I don't know if anybody in staff that can answer this question, but I've heard that New World is not a very easy system to use. Have we done an analysis, or will we in the future, or maybe look for another system that could cost less? I know this is a labor of love for Martine, and he's going to smile right now because he's worked hard when he was the Community Development Director to find ways to utilize the system better, but I've heard, and I just wonder, are we going to look for another system that can be integrated and be more friendly user, user-friendly?
I can tell you from the community development side, yeah, I've had, it's, it's, it's a powerful financial software, and it works great, and to do reports, and for finance, it's great. For community development, I think, I think, and when we got, when we bought it, I think we were the first ones to do the community development module, so it was a learning curve for us. And then we looped in, you know, we revamped, revamped the whole building permit process, and then we brought in the fire inspection program, and so it is what it is. I think for the amount of money that we've invested, I think, I think, you know, we're stuck with it. I think I'm over it. I just deal with it and, and use the program, because it is, it is good, and it, and it's integrated with all the other departments, so. And that, I think, was the goal of, when we got New World, that it was going to be integrated among all the different departments, so anybody that wanted to do or run a report can actually go in and do it themselves. They don't have to go to finance, "Hey, I need this report," or "I need this report." They can do it themselves, and they have access rights, and it's very, I mean, it's a complex program, but it, it, it works.
I'd just like to keep your mind open, so if you're ever at a conference and you run across a new system that might save the city some time efficiency-wise, I understand from code enforcement and other departments that it's just, it's very cumbersome sometimes to have to enter all the data the way you have to, and hopefully someday they'll, they'll fix that in that system. So anyways, that's just my comment. Thank you.
Mayor Proten Betts.
Yeah, my understanding was on the code part of it, is that code wasn't quite aware of the capabilities of the software. They were going and creating something in a separate system, then importing it, and they found out that New World Systems could handle that directly, and, am I correct? You guys handled that, and it was just a matter that the software wasn't being used properly. Somebody was doing something their old way, and then trying to integrate it. And then when, New World was very good about coming out here and spending time. Am I speaking out of turn here?
No, yeah, that was the issue that we handled about a year ago last summer.
By taking pictures and creating PDFs, and said, "Well, why don't you just import your pictures right in the New World instead of creating them somewhere else?" And then, so, it was just a matter of some training. And then we had so many people coming and going from code, never had the same person continuously long enough to, to keep them trained, and so it was always a training problem. So, I'm, you know, I'm, certainly it's worth it to keep our eyes open for anything. It's better that keeps the present supplier on their toes, but I think some of those issues with the timing, that the time usage of this was partly staff issue, so.
Councilmember Py.
I move staff recommendation.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Everybody, please vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Let's go on to item number 11. Consideration of the 2016-17 Community Development Block Grant Funding Requirements. I should say Funding Recommendations. Administrative Services Director Joseph Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution allowing, allowing staff to apply for CDBG funds for fiscal year 1617. As outlined in the staff report, we've identified a number of parks, projects that are, that are definitely in need, which would go, which the funding would, would go towards. We're estimating about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from CDBG, which is, which is the same as last year for the total amount, and included in the improvements that staff is recommend, recommending that, that we do, Mission Springs Park, restroom improvements, remove and replace roofing material, install new ventilation system, install new restroom lighting, repaint stalls, doors, water, water-efficient toilets, sinks, et cetera, and then also improvements to the playground equipment, shade structure, new flooring, et cetera. So, the way the, the funding would work, I know it was brought up in public comment earlier, we, the staff, staff would apply for the, for the funding. We would wait until we get our reward letter, which usually takes a couple months, and then once we're rewarded the funds, then we can start spending the money and documenting, of course, with receipts, and any action that may be required through, through the, through the council. And then we would submit those, and then get reimbursed. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go ahead, and Mayor Proten Betts.
So, this is through the county, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, my suggestion would be, this doesn't take care of all our park needs, right? I mean, we got, we could probably double this amount for the, the needs that we have for our park, right?
We could, we could probably quadruple it if we wanted to be totally fulfill our needs.
Okay, so, my suggestion would be, instead of just going to them for two hundred and seventeen thousand, why don't we put in a request for, maybe quadruple might not be a little much, but how about if we double the amount that we request from them?
Because the county puts in a lot of the legwork in the application process and reporting process, so it would probably take, you know, anywhere between half the time... half the time of a, you know, half-time staff person to a full-time, just keeping track of it. And our amount is reduced, but it's a lot less work for staff.
What I'm saying is, we're getting two hundred and seventeen thousand. Why not go for, uh, double that amount? What's the harm in asking?
We could certainly ask, but the county has their own formula and how they allocate the funds through, through the cities.
Press them since we've been on the short end of the stick and try and get a little bit more money and see if the rest of the parks in this poor community fix, because they certainly need it. Can you guys cobble together something quickly to go for that? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking here. If this is totally off the wall, you can let me know.
Well, we could, we could certainly ask. Uh, I'm not, I can't make any promises that they'll say yes. But it certainly, yeah, wouldn't hurt.
Okay, so, I, that's what I would like to do. Make a motion that we accept staff recommendation and directing staff to take care of the other needs of the parks and submit that in the application as well. Does that work that way? Our supervisors love us.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Councilmember Madison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to make similar comments, not the fact that I don't, I don't think we're going to get any more money from the CDBG. Like, the formula's set, and this is usually about the amount of money they'll, they'll release, um, but it doesn't hurt to always ask. What I would encourage is that we need to reevaluate the parks and what they need. I know the Little League fields need shade structures. I know the, the bleachers need shade structures at Warbin Park. I know Warbin Park needs a lot of, uh, facility upgrades and, and stuff like that. So, where do we draw the line, and how many parks are we going to try to upgrade in the future and, and do work at is the question. You know, maybe this is an opportunity, if the Renaissance Group does move forward with grant writing, or the city moves forward with grant writing, that this is a, a priority that we, we put into the, the, um, the MOU or whatever it is that we're moving forward with. But we have other parks with other needs also. Mission Springs Park and Warbin Park took, took on a one-point-five million dollar renovation about six years ago, and they're dilapidated again six years later because the maintenance hasn't been kept up. And it's not the fault of our staff. It's the fault of not having enough money to do it, and the overuse of these two parks. We have more parks planned for our community, and we really don't have a good parks plan. So, this is something that we've got to think about in the future. Just, I know this is kind of getting off subject, but it's something that we have to start doing, is planning for the future. And we're not doing that. The last four years have been no planning at all. It's terrible. That's my comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, I think the last comment I'll make is, it's really unfortunate because it seems like over the last six years, there might have been some opportunities. And, uh, but now we can have to move forward, and it's good to see they got that much money to improve our parks, and, uh, I think the general public has been asking for it. And, uh, I know parents and families and kids are really going to appreciate it, especially the bathrooms. I mean, you know, we have events. We bring people from out of the city that come visit us. It's always better to have the very best when it comes to bathrooms and any kind of facilities for our children. So, with that, let's vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Let's go to item number twelve. We're done. Isn't that amazing? I got one public comment card. Lawrence Bino? Did he, he left? Boy, he just brought it up to me right now. He left you out?
It's Susan Miller.
Oh, I apologize. Susan Miller.
Hello, Mayor and Council and everybody. I had jury duty today, so I wasn't quite ready to, um, give this speech. But, um, I want, I want to do my three minutes. And, uh, again, it's about, it's, I sound like a one-trick pony, but it's not, it's not really my intention. A city without a general plan is a city without a general plan. And our existing zoning map is about ten years old. It was outsourced originally, if I recall. And we, as a city, looked at updating our general plan with the preferred map. But that never really happened because we weren't able to fund the general plan. Now, the zoning map dictates what's really is possible in our city in the future. Somehow, you know, we can find money for graffiti abatement, which always comes back and trash, and a lot of, uh, parties and... But my question is really, where is the general plan? Where is it on the list? And how seriously are you really taking this as far as a development need of our city? Because it, well, I'll skip ahead a little bit. Cats live in a world of smell. Realtors, developers, and even cultivators seem to live in a world of what's possible and what can be done in what area. So, because of this, the general plan is so important. I listened to you guys talk about the budget when, when you did your budget meeting. I listened to you, but nobody really lobbied hard for the general plan. Like, it wasn't really, really important. But without having a general plan, we're like ten years back in our zoning. Uh, we don't have enough commercial, as Russ has brought up many times. And the commercial we do have is not really exactly where we want it today, and big box stores and bigger areas we need for commercial. Now, Martine has also brought up many times that, uh, Dillon is like a hodgepodge if there's no general plan. Dillon's an important through affair. It really makes a big, big impression on the city, how we plan. And now we're back to, and Rich, you, you know this one. You know, it, you know it well. And it's very, very frustrating because if you're a realtor, and I've been coming to all of the meetings, and I've also watched the cultivators coming in, they're making a whole different world for us than has ever been in the city. And they can put in restaurants, and they can put in bars, and they can make it look a lot like Palm Springs, places to go, and it'll help the hotels. But if everything has to be rezoned, and nothing's really possible easy, and we don't really have a plan for what we want, I think we're going to kill our opportunity. I really do. I think we're going to... These guys are busy. They've got a lot of money in their pockets, and they've got a lot of places to go. I think that was really evident at the Planning Commission with the three people that actually, you know, passed the original CUP. So, I'm just saying that this is really an important, you know, and I've been emailing you all about, about how for a while we were using three maps. Now, we're back to using one, but it's an old map, you guys. Believe me. I walk down Dillon, and I say, "Oh, no, rural desert? Come on. Wait, Angel View's here. Wait, all the Realtors are saying this is all commercial. Everything's all messed up."
Thank you, Susan. Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Three minutes. I, I hope, I hope that's helpful.
It's a priority for this upcoming budget. It's actually, we're going to be mandated to do it. So, it's going to get done now. I mean, we're, we're at that point. So, rest assured, it's a priority for the city staff and the council to get it done. So...
When?
Well, it'll be up for this next budget year, yes, as we get ready in the new year to plan the budget. It's going to be in the, it's going to be in there.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Mr. City Attorney, uh, we're going into closed session.
The city council is now going to recess in a closed session to confer, uh, with legal counsel regarding two anticipated litigation items. Uh, the first one pertains to correspondence received in connection with an existing notice of claim that was filed against the city pursuant to Government, Government Torque Claims Act. The second item deals with letters received from the Housing and Community Development Department and Goldfarb Lippman regarding dwelling unit size ordinance. And the final one is a potential initiation of litigation item pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine.